Session of the Ketchikan City Council. Clerk will call a roll.
Finnegan.
Here.
Gas.
Here.
Flora.
Here.
Matani.
Here.
Bradbury.
Here.
Gage.
Here.
Gisler.
Here.
We're all here. Please join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, in this small but gigantic world.
Ketchikan City Council would like to respectfully acknowledge the traditional first people of this land in Ketchikan, the Tongas, Lakit people. We have no communications, though they did make us copies of the budget policy proposal. Persons to be heard, no one signed up, is there anyone in the audience who wanted to speak? Hearing them, we'll close that. Onto the work session, Chair, what is your motion?
Your Honor, I move the city council recess into work session to discuss the draft budget policy.
Second.
We will dissect the discussion.
Mr. Mayor, if I can.
We haven't approved them.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But thank, thank, thank you for being prompt.
I need to go.
Yeah, you're right. Clerk will call a roll.
Bradbury. Uh, yes. Matani.
Yes.
Flora.
Yes.
Gas.
Yes.
Finnegan.
Yes.
Gage.
Yes.
Gisler.
Yes.
What's your approval? Now, do me.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, Mayor, council members, I sent you sort of a primer, I started with the PowerPoint presentation with an intent of let's start from the very beginning on how we get to this spot, looking at our audit, looking at our current budget practices that we have. I don't intend to go through that whole forty-five page PowerPoint presentation tonight, that was really something just to give basic information. And it's likely something we'll use as we bring new council members forward, so they have that information to start off with, rather than learning as you go, which we've kind of done in the past. So what I did is I pulled together budget policy based on some things that I've done in the past, as well as what we currently have in code, anything the council has passed related to budget. So you'll notice a lot of references in there as far as like a resolution, um, something passed in two thousand and seven. The one thing I don't have in here is the investment policy, I think that was passed in the eighties or early nineties. It's, it's older, but it's very conservative, so you know, we haven't uh, strayed from that at all, and so it's not really necessary to update it, we're not going to, going to invest in Bitcoin or anything like that. We're going to remain very conservative with our investing. So what I did is I just gathered everything that the council's done, at least what I could find, so if I've missed anything, or if there's things you want in here, now's the time to have that discussion, and so if we, if you'd like, we can just go through each section and then ask for comment, or I can start with the red stuff. But the red things are our comments that I've heard from the council, or that I've seen um, in some of our budget discussions last year. There's one about technology fund, that's from me, and I'll, I'll discuss that even more, why I think that's necessary. So now's the time that if you have a priority, if you think something has to be included in our budget, if you think funds, something has to be dedicated, this is the time to do that, so if you have a, I'll use that technology fund reference as um, an example. So for example, I've heard a lot from council that we want to be more efficient, that, that word comes up quite a bit in ours, you know, efficiency, 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 but we don't make the investments necessary to improve our technology to lead to efficiency. So if we do more things that are electronic, if we invest in better technology, if we give our people tools to do more work with better tools, those are the things that can lead to efficiency, so that's why I just added that line of, you know, this would be my thought, um, if we really want to be on that edge of, let's keep our staff small, but let's keep our tools large, or great, give them the tools they need to do their jobs more efficiently. So um, we can either go like section one, purpose, does that really wrap up what you guys think is the purpose of your budget policy? Um, I'm focusing in on the core purpose that we discussed, we had in our work session. This is something that I imagine will evolve as we move through the strategic planning process, and we start to identify more and more important items. So uh, what I mean by that example is I think I had strategic objectives, strategic commitments in there. That's one item that that would probably change as we come up with our strategic plan. So these are just items that came out of our work session, or things that you guys have mentioned as a council or in meetings, so those are just items that I pulled together based on those discussions. But I imagine this is going to be more of a living document as we evolve into our strategic plan. So um, we can go section by section, if there are no comments or no changes, I have the document open, I think that might be the easiest, and just have a very open conversation, because um, now's the time for the council to give us that direction. The more direction we have at the beginning of what is acceptable to the council, the easier it is for us to prepare the budget. I'll tell you now, and poor Michelle, I've put her through the wringer these last few weeks, as we've gone through our overtime approvals, we've been running into situations where overtime is increasing in all departments, and there's nothing we can do about it, we've got increased calls, we've had emergency callouts, we're short on staff. Um, but like I said, I keep telling her, well, those departments are going to have to figure it out without going back to the general fund, without going back to reserves, we already know we can't keep hitting our reserves, and so um, like I said, I, I put her through the wringer, but in here, we can also memorialize that practice as instruction from the council, like this is our fund balance commitment. This is where we want to be as a community, and, and how to get there. So that's the spiel, and, and we can go section by section, that would be the easiest.
Yes, ask a question.
A specific question to start with, so overtime's up, okay, and you tasked Finance Director with not hitting the general fund and not hitting reserves. What does that leave?
Um, it leave, well, for example, all the overtime memos that you all have approved, they've been taken from other line items. So in other words, I'm taking from existing salary, or I'm giving up some of my training, I'm going to forego something in operations in order to make that happen.
Thank you.
And I just, I'll open that, how, how sustainable is that approach?
When we were going through COVID, not very, like we had to hit reserves, that was an extraordinary circumstance. And that's not something that's addressed in here, because that is something that will have to come to council, in extraordinary circumstances, you're going to have to hit your reserves. That's what they're for, that's why you set those fund balances, is for the extraordinary, and COVID was definitely the extraordinary. Operating the way we did during COVID is not sustainable, it's not going to meet your purpose of providing good and reliable infrastructure, it's not going to create opportunity in the city, it's just going to hold us to a very strict diet, and eventually makes an unhealthy organization.
Um, one thing I guess, I'll just jump in, is that on the strategic commitments, um, what I noticed was missing was the um, equity inequality for all citizens. Um, and I think promote and lead by example, equity and equality, I, I think um, it definitely needs to be in there. Um, I noticed in the first half, um, under the city manager, I, I think you need to in where it says one city manager shall be chief, um, it says he, maybe change that to they, since it could be you, female or male.
And that's just a direct quote from the code?
Yeah, I know. It can be changed.
Wrong.
Um, is it possible to go section by section? Um, just because like, I got quite like a few questions here and there, um, as I don't know what others, but then also some suggestions.
I, I, I think that'd be preferable, what do you?
So we can actually just start with purpose, and the purpose is to establish the principles and procedures, procedures for developing, improving, and executing the annual budget. So, the core purpose of the council is to provide affordable services and reliable infrastructure necessary for citizens flourish, and the budget has to somehow tie to that, so that was the basic purpose, if there's anything else you need me to add or edit, I'm completely open for suggestions, there's zero ego involved with this process. Okay.
Sure.
So the next one is budget preparation, um, the first paragraph has, that is what's in code, as well as what was in the city charter regarding KPU and article, so that one's just a quote of our code. The next statement is about the responsibility of the council to set those budgetary goals and guidelines, and adopt appropriations for the funds, and then it's the responsibility of the manager and staff to prepare the budget within the standards, meet the needs and objectives of their department, and then under the KMC, propose a budget for the next fiscal year that will contain detailed estimates of anticipated revenues and proposed expenditures. So um, again, that last sentence is something directly out of the city charter. The first few sentences are just a statement of how we operate, you know, we have a, a council manager form of government, and this is how we operate in today's world, that's how we work.
Um, so just for clarification, um, at, so let's say, I want to say like, no more than five percent increase for each department, would that be under budget preparation, or would that be something we talk about for budget policies?
That would be something we talk about when we get to the soft cap.
The soft, okay.
If the, if the council wants to set a number for the soft cap, um, let's say, I think I put September first as an example, that we meet and say, we don't want to see our budget uh, extract, not, that's opposite of constrict.
Expand.
Expand, there you go.
Oh, extract, that's pretty much it.
So we don't want the budget to expand beyond five percent, and that would be the soft cap set, and you could do it in policy, or you could do it as a council action.
Okay.
Do you have a minute?
Uh, I was going to ask that same uh, thing, but I think this is the, maybe an appropriate time to um, make a suggestion, I would like to set in policy that moving forward, we have a funding mechanism or plan in, in place prior to approving large increases in spending like we ran into last year where we had to do the tax increase. Um, I don't know the proper way to say that, but basically before we approve something like that, to have the plan to pay for it first.
Okay. I know, I know exactly what you're talking about, we were actually having that discussion last week in finance about making sure that if we're proposing increases, or we have a funding plan, that that needs to be approved at budget time, and not later on, but, okay.
To follow up on that, I mean, and I, I can't speak for Councilmember Gas, but I understand like, increases happen, you know, things increase, um, solid waste, you know, you never know what the barge is going to do to us, um, so I mean, I don't mind looking at that stuff after the budget time, but so many times it comes to us and there's no reason, it's just, oh, we want to increase this four percent, and then it's like, well, why? It's like the whole property taxes, like, hey, why do, where does this money need to go, where is it being earmarked and um, whatnot, and so I guess that would kind of tie into that, just making sure, whenever it comes to us, that it actually has a purpose.
Right.
With the discussion, pledge of preparation.
The other thing I have in here is that our long-range budgets, and we don't necessarily do this, um, we do in the sense that Michelle and her staff actually look at trend analysis and do future projection, you see it even in our financial statements when we have that letter from management regarding, um, we see an increase in cruise ship passengers, we, we do somewhat of an analysis, but we've never really adopted a long-range budget, like, we know we're going to get X revenues into the future, therefore we know we're going to have Y services demanded. And you know, so we've never really actually done that, we do it somewhat in our, in our, I kept saying CAFRA, I know it's wrong now, it's ACRL. We haven't looked at it strategically, and so I put in this line only because that's coming, that's something we're going to start doing once we start on that strategic plan app. So it's not applicable right now, but once we have strategic goals and performance measures, and that takes a, that's a whole lot of work, I'll, I'll tell you that, but once we get into that, that strategic planning and strategic initiative mindset, I just wanted to have that line in there, that we will be referencing long-term plans.
Chairman. To the mayor, I know we had talked, gosh, I just lost that spot, I just, oh, there we are. Um, with respect to condition of residence and facilities and infrastructure, I wondered if that would include, uh, we had some discussions at the previous work session about keeping a rolling inventory of vehicles that are falling into disrepair that often are quite expensive, that you know, if we can't get them this coming year, we know it's going to be that much more expensive in the years to follow, um, would this portion of the budget preparation include a rolling inventory like that for vehicles?
Yeah, I think that's great, that'd be a great suggestion, the same with our CIP, um, our CIP is like a five, six-year projection, but and again, I'm, I'm sorry, Michelle, I keep doing this, I'm not going to ask you anything, I just keep throwing things at you. Um, the CIP, I would like to see real funding mechanisms in there, we kind of referenced maybe six million in grants, maybe twenty million there, but we need to actually say, we are going to actively go after um, the state revolving loan fund, we're going to actively go after CDPG grants, we're going to actively go after SEMT grants, whatever that may be, that needs to be in our CIP also. So not just a, we think we have the million in cash, and we have, I think we need a two million in grant to have a little more activity, as well as I'd like to see the CIP listed in such a way that it's phased, you know, phase one in fiscal year twenty-four, this is what we really need to achieve design and engineering, or obtaining right away, anything like that, phase two, this is what we really think we're going to need for construction, phase three, this is what we'll need for furnishing and maintenance, or whatever comes after, depending on that project. So I'd like to see our CIPs be a lot more um, developed on those projects. But that is a, a good point, to add that in there, so we actually see a condition of our infrastructure. Okay, so the big one is the budget policy, the actual, what, what we do. In section A, obviously, uh, this is just restates what happens in today's world, that the council adopts appropriations, we have to manage the budgets, anything between funds or inter-funds or inter-fund loans have to be approved by council, that's very true today, that's also part of the uh, GASB standards with the general accepted accounting principles. Um, so that's a restatement of it. The next one is B, and this is primarily language from the GFOA, the Government Financial Officers Association. What you want to have is a structurally balanced budget, and so what that means is we can't have, yay, we got lots of money, let's spend as much as we're generating, that's not a sustainable budget, as we found during COVID, but you want something that's going to be very long-term, so if I receive two million dollars worth of grants, and I hire a bunch of staff with that two million dollars, but the grants expire, that's not a sustainable budget, because somehow I'm going to have to absorb that by increasing taxes, because once the grants go away, what's my plan to absorb those expenses, or do those expenses go away, does that service go away? So structurally balanced budget means that our recurring revenues will always meet our recurring expenses, and we do that now, I mean, that's good practice, that's good financial practice. In the past couple of years because of COVID, our recurring revenues have not met our recurring expenditures, because we were in an emergency situation where our, our sales tax went down. So what this says is that we're maintaining financial stability, and to do so, we're going to conservatively estimate our resi, conservatively estimate our revenues, and we won't assume growth rates in excess of inflation. So in other words, when it comes to revenues, even though I think we're going to get two million cruise passengers next year, I'm not going to anticipate revenues by that, I'm going to keep pace with inflation, if I know, okay, I've been trending based on the PLEA notices, I'm going to really stick to those estimated inflation numbers, or less when it comes to revenue projection. And then in addition to that, for expenditures, we will always budget at least a hundred percent of historical and anticipated costs. So we've seen this, um, I'll pick on our overtime, we anticipate, well, we, we're going to be fully staffed, so let's not put as much overtime in, we don't think we'll have such a bad year this time, let's not put as much overtime in. Rather, we should put a hundred percent of our historical value, you know, just to be safe, and if we don't spend it, we don't spend it, it goes back to our general fund. So this statement is just saying that we're going to conservatively estimate our revenues, which is good practice, and, and this is what our finance team does anyway, um, which is why you'll see in the coming months us coming back asking for budget adjustments to recognize unanticipated revenues, because we are conservative in that, in that practice, but you never want to get so confident in your budgeting that you spend to what you think you might get, we really want to be conservative in that, in that sense, that's, that's all that says, is we'll conservatively treat our revenues, and then our expenses will assume the worst, or actually what's accurate.
So when you speak on a revenue projected and how we um, look at that number, is there like a certain percentage, like it, I'll just use cruise ships just because use that, so if there's one point five million slated to come, um, do you, you know, conservatively estimate like eighty-five percent of that's actually going to come, or kind of, how does that, how does that number come to term?
I know with this year when we were preparing the budget, and it was, it was really just a discussion of, we know we're going to have a better season than last year, but we actually, I think we only did eighty-five percent, now that you say that number, of what we thought the best was going to be.
Okay.
And then we backed it down, so I think we, and we will see that in our sales tax revenue, you'll see some adjustments coming in.
And then a follow-up on that, is there a set practice of how like, just like how that number is come to term, like is there a set number, is there, or is it just kind of, this is what we feel this, for this particular item or revenue source, so that's what we're going to go with, kind of, is it based on trends, like how does that number come to fruition?
And what we use now is historical trend analysis, and so our finance department has actually tracked every revenue line item, and, and you see it in our budget, you'll see the five-year tracking, the six-year tracking. So Michelle will come in and say, this is the trend, we're seeing growth on this end, obviously with COVID, that's our abnormal time, but um, she will take those trends, and then in her practice, she backs it down a little bit, so she'll take off ten percent, or take off where she's feeling comfortable, to say, I know I can bring in this much revenue, and, and really, it does become a comfort call, but we don't have an actual formula, there's nothing formulaic about it. I know um, in Las Cruces, I'll admit, we were spoiled, because we actually had an economist who did full trend analysis on every economy in the city and every tax base for us. Uh, our economy is a little different in Alaska, we don't have as much diversity as other communities, and our tax base is a lot lower, so I'm very comfortable it is the fact that it's um, historical knowledge from staff, but they do use historical trend analysis, and they do look at, well, this is what's being predicted for um, from PLEA for passengers, since that is our biggest indicator. The next big one is strategic commitments, oh, I'm sorry.
Got it. Is this appropriate time to?
Yes.
Okay, um, so just to be clear before I ask anything else, we're reading this, uh, if suggestions are made here, it's a, it'll be brought back as a future agenda item to be discussed and voted on by the body to set into policy in the future, right, it's like anything else?
That's correct, so I'll take, I'm taking comments now, I'm going to find the best place to put them in, I'll send that out to council for your own personal review, to look at it, make any other comments and suggestions, and then it will come back as a policy to the entire board, for the council to adopt.
I would like to uh, submit a proposal for the budget policy that uh, whenever implementing any new government program or position, a program or position of similar cost shall be eliminated as well to avoid increasing the budget.
And is that in reference to a certain fund spending, or what limitations, and the reason I ask that, I'll, I'll give an example, the rural housing coordinator, we're going to be bringing on that position, that's a five-year grant-funded position that will, is supposed to address our homelessness programs and, and issues. Would we have to eliminate somebody if it's fully grant-funded, or is this only if it impacts general fund spending or increased spending, because we'll get, we do, we will get grants for um, additional EMTs, we get grants for uh, temporary labor, that kind of stuff.
So I guess my question would kind of bring it back to what you mentioned just a little bit ago, in this case, you say it's a five-year grant to fund the position, the concern would be that, as you mentioned earlier, what happens when the grant dries up, so in this case, would it be a position that's going to be for five years, and then the position, the person will be let go, or, because the concern is, when we bring on a program like you've mentioned earlier, maybe we get some grant money for it for two or three or five years, but then when that grant money dries up, as you stated, then we're left with the expenditure, so I guess I would kind of ask you that.
Right, and, and that would be, what's the value of the position, so if that position's bringing in half a million dollars in CDPG funding every year for housing, in affordable housing, is it worth funding through the council budget, so those are the kind of questions we would have to ask. Um, if we make it a blanket, one FTE, if you want a new FTE, you have to lose an FTE. I'd want some language in there that we're still meeting the need, so for example, in that position, if we find uh, the, I'll just use the rural housing coordinator, if that person starts bringing in so much money for the city to help toward affordable housing projects, that would be the council's time to say, is it worth that continued investment as part of our budget?
Sure, so I wouldn't be, I mean, I'd be in, after hearing that, I mean, I'd be in favor of adding a, I guess, an additional sentence onto that to something to the extent of unless the position is clearly stated to bring in more revenue, or something of that nature, you know, but my concern is uh, positions that are just going to be added expenses uh, to this, and so I'll kind of leave that up to you, how you want to word it, but it's sort of a caveat, I suppose, you know?
I know I have in there that the, and I've told this to our department head, if they're requesting a new FTE, they have to show a business case for it, so in other words, I need to spend a hundred thousand dollars on this new employee, but what's your performance measure for that? Is it, I've got a new employee and I'm going to increase patrol at Creek Street, or I've got a new employee and I'm going to increase the number of customers driving to our telecom, like what's the result of that new employee, it can't just be another expense, there has to be an output that is demonstrable. So maybe if I change that language around to talk a little bit more about, you know, where's the cost savings of hiring this employee, are you eliminating overtime by hiring this employee, because that could cause a bounce, are you um, giving reprieve to overworked employees, because that, that may not have a dollar value, but it has a value, so maybe I can reward that section about making sure it's not just expanding the budget to expand the budget, you know, that there is some value that's demonstrated with that new request.
I follow you, I just, I, I will want to be very cautious of, because I, I don't want to get caught in the weeds where, oh, well, this person's going to be of value because they're a valuable person, you know, everyone has value, you know what I mean?
Yeah, yeah.
I do follow you, and I, I, I agree mostly with what you're saying, I just, I want to err on the cautious side of increases to the budget.
And I agree, there has to be a business reason for new employee, not just, you know, we think we could, we could use one, because we all fit.
Just for clarification, uh, is this time that we like, talk about other people's ideas and go back and forth, or, or is it just ideas come out and we talk about it later?
Just to clarify, I tried to bring it up here because I thought it would be appropriate under budget policy.
Yeah, I, I just didn't know if it's like, we're just throwing out ideas, or can like, the council like, collectively talk about these items, or do we wait for them to be brought back to us? How, I just, I guess I'm a little confused now, since I thought tonight we were going to talk about whatever suggestion anybody had, and then we would as a council agree on it tonight, moving forward, but as I understood, that will now come back to us at a later time?
Well, we, we can obviously, if, if, if someone brings something up and you have to say that, that's fine, we, we just can't reach any, any sort of consensus tonight.
Like, couldn't we, I mean, we entered work session, we have to exit work session to go back into regular meeting. I just, I'm just trying to figure out the structure, because is this the time to discuss, or do we discuss it later?
This is the time to discuss.
With other council members?
Yes, yes, we can do that, we just, we just cannot take any sort of action that codifies its net, but we can discuss it.
Okay, then on that, um, I understand, um, Councilmember Gas' importance on not increasing the um, budget unnecessary, unnecessarily, I do have a concern with that type of a policy, because I feel like it is super specific that could lock us in um, to standards that might not benefit the citizens and the services that we provide, and so I just, um, I just wanted to state that, that I was, I'm a little concerned with that exact policy, but I do appreciate the explanation from the management side of saying, is there a purpose for that, which I think that's what we all sit here at a dais for, is when those times come up, so in five years, we approved the housing coordinator in five, four years, so that we can plan ahead, it's going to come back to the council that's sitting here at that time to deem, is it purposeful or not, and then that, that council will need to determine, is this something you can continue or not, but I just worry about a policy being put in place now that But I just worry about a policy being put in place now that. Um, if it's, if another council deems it's purposeful or not, um, I just don't wanna. Tie our staff, especially when she got down to like the one um FTE uh versus another one um FTE. I mean, that could be really. That could kind of get us in a little bare bone structure there. Um, and so I just a little cautious with that specific, maybe just making it a little broader.
That's cool. I think the manager explains it well. Just what's the rationale? The perpetual zero-sum game? Has no basis in reality. Uh, for example, we're gonna hire a tourism manager soon. First job they're gonna do is an analysis of what we can charge the cruise lines. That might bring in a couple of million dollars. Easily justifiable. Or we just fall back on, we hired a tourism manager, who do we throw out? So I think I agree with council member Bradbury. It's a, the document is a living document. The city is a living city. Things are gonna change. Needs are gonna change. Staffing is gonna go up or down based upon changes in population, changes in need. We have, I agree with the fiscally conservative approach. But we also have to listen to what the needs of the community are. We've heard a lot about homelessness and increased crime and things going on in Creek Street. So what did I do? I asked for a number. How many police officers do we need? To meet the, the increased public safety need? Well, I think it's four hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. So when the budget cycle rolls around, we can say, no. To the residents, you're not getting any more police officers, deal with it. Or we can find the money like the manager suggested, can't come from the general fund. What are we gonna give up? So it's gonna be give and take, but I, I, I think if the goal is just to be static. And at zero in a flat line. Long-term. I don't see how that's possibly sustainable. She has.
So a little more to say on this proposed policy. Something I've always heard and, and from my experience, it seems to be true on every level of government and there may be small exceptions somewhere. But almost always. The government, the cost of government, the size of government, the presence of government never decreases. Year after year, council after council, president after president, Congress after Congress. Uh. The size and cost of the government increases drastically and. The purpose of government is to serve the citizens, but you know, we're at one point six million or whatever it is uh tourist a year here. More than people twenty years ago probably ever would have dreamed. Uh, theoretically, if you, based on the numbers, our economy should be absolutely booming and we should have a huge surplus in our local government and we don't. Uh. Obviously with things like that on the tourism side, more positions are needed, but I think we, we, we are maxed out. And at some point, we need to have some policy and some structure that. Brings our spending under control. Um, I'm trying to think of realistic proactive ways where we can finally maybe make some progress there. Be honest, in my time on this council, we've made no progress there. And I think we all are trying to move that direction, which I appreciate from the manager and the council. Um, but I just think this is a reasonable thing that says if we're gonna increase government, we're gonna decrease part of it. So that's my reasoning for it. And I, I think it's a, a. Actual policy that could have an impact.
Excuse me.
Yeah, I uh. I, I uh, I can empathize with the thoughts behind that uh strategy, but I, I still, I. I see that. The city grows and shrinks and grows and shrinks and, and um. Needs change and evolve and, and um I, I still think uh. That um. That we can't have a flat line zero, even though it would be wonderful. Too. It's too uh. Combining. You have to have some. Give and take.
I think flat line zero, no, but, but. We keep spending, we keep spending. We keep increasing staff. I know we have issues with short staffing. But there has to be some way of. Controlling this. I totally understand. It cannot be zero, but. We cannot just continue to spend. We need to protect, project and cut somewhere. To meet. The realistic goals of this city.
Um, for the manager, is there um? A policy or line item that you can put in there that does reference uh? The policy that council member gases come up, but maybe a little bit more. Cause I, I do agree that there needs to be a purpose. We can't just be increasing just because we wanna increase. Um. And so I just wonder if there is a way to put that on paper that what additional services that we're adding? Like justifying that um. As you had mentioned, like the housing coordinator, tourism manager position and just putting down on paper that there needs to be. A very good. Reasoning behind why we're increasing. Whatever it is, or creating a new department or section or service.
So I think what we can do is a policy, policy statement. That it's the intent of the council to control uh the growth of our personnel. Because that is the largest part of our budget, which is true for every municipality. I think, you know, uh fortunately, we're not a school district. That's most of their budget. And we don't have to fill that in, but. Um, I think of making a policy statement that. That it is our intent as a government and organization to control labor growth. And that FTE area, making that the policy statement and to that end, we would like to see this type of justification. And then we can do that on our side. I'll, I'll have to wordsmith that um on our side. And then, you know, for you, your expectation in the budget would probably be, and I'm just pulling on the thread more. Is every new FTE request will have some sort of form, just like the CIP. That you see in your budget books. Like this is the form that says this is the business case. This is the justification. This is why I'm asking for it. This is what I expect to see as a result. Of this uh new FTE. That way you can come back later in the year and say, did this happen? Did we increase the patrol over Creek Street? Did we increase the number of complaints or decrease the number of complaints? But if, if we have that sort of form in there to tie it, did this work? Then we know that that was a successful ask as well as a justifiable one. But by having somebody really think out ahead of time. What that FTE request would look like. So we can make a policy statement that it's our, our policy to control that growth in FTEs. Where we wanna keep our government as small as possible. But while serving our citizens, because that's the balance, is if I, if I need. Another ambulance because I'm getting called every thirty minutes, then I need another ambulance. There's nothing I can really do about that. But if we have it, it's our policy to control that growth and keep it. And then. The person, the mechanism would be that justification piece that would appear with your budget packets.
Excuse me.
Um. Constantly sit here and I listen to cutting, cutting and cutting and frivolous use of funding. And I have never in my nine years seen frivolous use of cutting or funds. Nor have I seen enough staff to staff all of our departments. There. You know, we, we service people in water, sewer, garbage, police, fire. Utilities. And multiple other things. At the end of the day, our job is to make sure that everyone in this community is safe. And have services. I don't know anybody who wants to live without water, sewer, garbage. Police, fire. Or for that matter, if they want to uh get their own water, I guess they can move. North or south, well, not south, because they have water, north. Um. When I read through this, I saw pretty much only a few things that I had questions on. Um, but for the most part, it addressed the, the idea of making sure that if they brought in somebody um on a grant. Um, budgeting and um looking towards um additional funding. If and when that grant ends to um keep that position on, if they could keep that position on. Um, and many things that I've worked, many jobs where I was a grant. And at the end of the grant, when it went away, I went away and I went on to a new job. That's how that works. And most people understand that. Um. I. We all know that healthcare will go up. Cost of living is gonna go up. There is no going down. It, in all my lifetime and. It never has gone back to what it was when I was born. I don't expect it to. Um. But at this end of the day, um, I know for a fact that we are short-staffed in almost every single department. Um, and that, that should be our goal. And how do we address that? And where does the funding come from? That it does not impede on the community? And at the end of the day, um, we find other sources. I know the fire department, um. They get a lot of grants, so only about a million dollars comes out of our budget. And they charge for their services. So, and we nitpick um what kind of equipment they have. And I can tell you from personal experience. That when we nitpick equipment, somebody gets hurt and almost dies. I am the prodigy of one of those council meetings where we didn't need that equipment. And so for fifty thousand dollars, they nixed it. And those guys had to sit in that building for forty-five minutes with house jacks. Instead of mats that you shove under a rock that lift a train. So. I, I, I understand people's concerns. But at the end of the day, keeping our community safe. And having um our staff with viable equipment. That they don't have to worry about breaking down in the midst of an emergency. And yeah, not emergencies don't happen every day. Thank God. But um they do have. But, and at the same time, we have uh water, sewer and garbage guys that are busting their butt. And they're human and they need a break.
Mr. Pennington?
I just wanna throw a couple of cents in on this and say that I appreciate the, without saying the, the language, of course, prior to maybe putting it together. Um, the manager's approach to uh considering this policy, which I think as proposed is a little bit black and white, whereas personal matters. Personnel matters tend to be a little bit more nuanced, a little bit more gray area. And I think we need to have that. Flexibility for growth in staff if it's required for some of the reasons that have been articulated. But I like the idea of having that explanation in place, especially during the budget cycle, because. It gives us context by which to uh. Estimate the value of, the value added of the anticipated value added of, of a new staff member. So uh. Of course, we haven't seen the language on that yet, but I, I think that approach um addresses the, the legitimate concern about. Raining in our expenses as best we can, but it doesn't put us into this sort of zero-sum game of trading one in for, for another. And having to determine who has to go simply because we brought somebody else on for it.
Question from the manager. Um. We're short-staffed now, but all those positions are funded in the budget, aren't they?
That's correct.
Okay.
Spencer.
Well, I, I wanted to go on to a new topic, so I'll wait until they're, they're done discussing. Sorry. I thought it was ending, so I was gonna have another idea.
I'm done after this sentence, but uh just to, because she brought that up, I just want, I'm sure everyone understands, but I just wanted to clarify. I'm not talking about, you know, someone quits and then we're trying to fill the position. Obviously, that's, I'm talking about adding new programs, new expenses, new, new. Also employees. So this would not be for vacant positions that, just to clarify. Also, one more thing I wanted to say and then I'll be done. Part of my reasoning behind this is over the last, most particularly the last. Budget cycle we went through. We were not, I mean, certainly didn't make any cuts. We were trying to make some reduces, reductions in growth. We didn't have much luck there. But our. What I kept hearing was there's so much federal grants and federal funding coming in and. Yeah, we're, the budget's out of control, but just hold tight. We're gonna, this is just how it is now. We're gonna get all this money. And maybe I'm wrong, someone can correct me, but I don't think we have seen the waterfall of federal money pouring in that we were. Hoping or expecting. And so that's all the more reason moving forward to set some actual concrete policy to address. Because no one comes, I don't believe any department head or any person comes and goes, boy, I sure would love to. You know, let's raise that tax from eight percent to nine percent and let's make it a little harder. No one does that. It's always good intentions, but at the end of the day, we end up with a situation where our citizens can't afford to live here. Literally. So I'm just trying to think outside the box here.
Another clarification from the manager. So uh. We can't go after a grant unless we have it in the budget, can we?
Uh, we can apply for grants if, if, whether or not it's in the budget. So um, for example. The grant that we're talking about, the rural housing coordinator, it's not in the budget. I just had that conversation and applied for it. Um, so we would add it to the budget before we could accept the grant. So that is something which.
That's not.
Something to keep in mind, twenty twenty-three was a weird year because. We were trying to get back where we were before twenty twenty. And so we're, we're kind of trying to climb out of the hole and fill it in at the same time. So it's been an odd. An odd year for everybody.
Um, okay, so the structurally balanced budget, could you define what that means? And is that good, like are we still gonna have deficits presented to us? Like what does structurally balanced budget actually mean in terms of what we're gonna present?
The goal of that is to ensure that we are not using reserves year to year because your recurring revenues match your recurring expenses. And, and that's really where you wanna get. That's the bottom line. Um, you're not using grant funds to take care of operations. You're only using it for capital projects. You're using one-time monies, whether it be um, gosh, I can't think of one right now. Uh, I'll pick on the S E M T because that's been sort of the windfall for us. We're not hiring forty new firefighters with S, S E M T funds. We're paying for our operational expenses because our call volume went up. So we're using it for that in order to adjust, but we're also using it for capital projects. With the idea that this is not a guarantee that the program is gonna work forever. Whereas sales tax, that's always gonna be there. And so for structurally balanced, it just means that we're not gonna keep hitting reserves. We're not gonna keep um relying on outside funds to meet our operational expenses. So I'll use one county when they made this commitment to be structurally balanced. And it was really impressive because in New Mexico, it's much like Alaska. More than fifty percent of the state is owned by the federal government. Um, where Alaska is much higher than that. But this county actually changed their federal PILT money to taking it out of their operational budget completely. It was only going to be for capital and it took them four years to get there because it was a significant amount of money. But when the feds cut our PILT money for two years, and I don't know if you guys were experiencing that. When they couldn't come to budget deals and no states got PILTS, it was really devastating to everybody. They were fine. And so it was saying, we know that this revenue could go away someday and so we're not gonna commit it to our operational funds.
Follow up on that then, um. We're, are. Could we achieve that this budget cycle? Just knowing how large the deficit was the last time a budget was presented to us. I, I find it very hard. And this, I don't want anyone to take this wrong. I find it really hard that we're gonna be able to, to. In twenty twenty-four, have a structurally balanced budget per this policy. Is that a?
It may not be possible in twenty twenty-four unless of course our revenues come in better than anticipated because of the increase in cruise passengers. Because we already know um our, our property tax. Because we already know our, our property tax is going to be a little bit more because of the valuations. Therefore, we held the mill levy flat, but we know revenue will go up a little bit. With the sales tax, we are seeing our revenues coming in higher than anticipated. I know general fund, we might be able to get there, possibly. Or get close, but I don't think we'll do it in 2024. KPU is a completely different story because we need great structure to be removed in that end. But I don't believe, and Michelle, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think we can get there in one fiscal year.
It depends on
It depends.
Enterprise, fair on sales tax. We need to fix that.
And and by having it a policy, when we present the budget and come to you and say, we are not gonna hit A, B, and C, then you have that documented for the council to say, we acknowledge that unless we give up services, we're not gonna hit A, B, and C. That's the decision you have to make. Is it more important to meet a fund balance? Or is it more important to provide this service? Because that's where the cut has to happen, is what are we gonna eliminate in order to meet this? And that's when it becomes a council decision, when we can come up and say, under this, if we were to maintain level services with current revenue estimates, we may not be able to give back to our fund balances this year. Or we may have to hit reserves. And that's when it comes to a council discussion of, okay, well, then you need to cut something.
So I love this policy being in, put in place because I, that, I think that's important. As we've heard, it's probably not going to be achieved right away. And so one of my concerns going into this next budget cycle is ensuring whatever deficit is brought forward to the council isn't as extreme as the last deficit of $9 million that came to us last budget cycle. So I don't know, for me, I would like to put a cap on that deficit that then holds our staff to ensuring that we aren't drawing down our reserves a significant amount or putting all this money out there when we know we can't afford it. So I personally would like to see, and we can save for 2024, FY 2024, because it could be different in 2025. But I would like to see no more than $2 million deficit if we have to have a deficit presented at the time, because $2 million in our reserves is functionable without completely drawing our reserves down. I mean, I think it puts us below what we're supposed to have in there, if I calculate correctly. But I just personally would like to see a, a define, we are not going to get a budget that's like that again. So I don't know what others think, but I, that $2 million gives a little wiggle room, but is also not exorbitant to where it would, we actually had to spend that money, that we would be completely out of reserves.
I'm wondering if, if, if you guys have a better sense right now where we're going now, what we need. Maybe if you can come back to us with a number, you think is the reasoning. Rather, rather than us trying to impose a number on you at this point?
And even if it's an objective of, we'd like to see that deficit cut in half. I mean, that's, you know, is that possible? And I, I think that's a great reference, again, coming back to the soft cap. If we're controlling our increase, our budget expansion, and also working to chisel down that deficit, I think that's an excellent objective for, for the council, to me.
To follow up on that, though, my concern with, with that is our budget exceeded what we could pay for by $9 million. So unless we say, hey, guys, you're cutting 20% of your budget, which no one could sit at this table and say, that's realistic with the costs of practically everything in the world, including paper, being absorbent. That's why I'm just concerned, it's saying we're basing off the last year's budget, which put us in a huge deficit. So, and now we might say, okay, increase by, you know, 5%, no more than 5% or 10%. We're now gonna have a budget still that way exceeds what we are even capable, if everything was amazing, of bringing in. And so that's where I'm concerned moving forward. If using 2023 or FY 2023 as our marker, we still, to this day, can't afford that budget. Like, our reserve can't afford it. We probably will have a larger deficit this year, even with sales tax coming in higher, but then other funds are not increasing. So I just don't see how we could move forward without setting a guideline. Because if we don't set a guideline and we say, okay, let's just repeat what we did last year, we're looking at, you know, another nine, possibly 12 million, million-dollar deficit, that, what are we gonna do with? And so that's where I'm just concerned is we had a really, the budget was not great last time. So I just would like some parameters moving forward because we know costs have to go up. But I feel department heads are better at saying what they can and can't live without to meet the objective of the deficit than us sitting here at the table. And that's no offense to anybody at the table. I just think they're the better ones. As we saw the last budget, we would ask, you know, then what can you live without? And the police department said, well, I could live without this and this, if I could have this. Done, perfect. But it'd be nice for that to be taken care of prior to them even coming to us, because they know their department. They know what is most important to them and to their citizens they serve in whatever KPU or site. So that's where I'm coming from, of just, I'm super concerned about that deficit coming back, Vic.
Mr. Matani, you had your hand up a little bit good. Do you want to follow up on that, or just, just let me get over some?
You know, just follow up on, I agree with Councilwoman Bradbury totally. Because I feel the budget is going to be in deficit even more than 12 and 13 million, even without revenue collection. My question to the manager through the chair is, our reserve funds, where are we at? At the departments, do we have enough reserves even for a month?
Oh, yes, yeah.
Across the board?
Well, we don't do it by department by department. We have our general fund as funds. So KPU altogether is a fund. But if we broke it out, I think on KPU, I want to say wastewater is the only one on its own that meets the fund balance requirements. But we have fund balance in every fund. We're not at the point where we're robbing Peter to pay Paul or that we're going to run out of cash one day. We're, we're not at that point on the reserves. But you're absolutely right, as well as Councilmember Bradbury, we can't operate a deficit, a deficit budget every year. And, and I think we all understood with '23, because coming out of COVID and not understanding our revenues and hoping to get back to a normal year. Unfortunately, as revenues recovered, costs went up too. And it's just so devastating as a government that, and, and we don't have, we don't have an Amazon building a factory here on the island. We don't have some economic driver that's coming in. We really have to make do with what we have currently. There's no big economic development effort happening in the, in the area, much less in the city. But as far as our fund balances go, we are, we are sufficient. You know, we're not meeting your fund balance goals as far as the, I think, 30, 12% or I have to look at the numbers. 25% of your operating expense. We're not quite there, but we can run for a month or two. Revenues are continuous also. So we, it's not like we don't get new money every month.
I'm afraid those revenues are gonna eventually catch up, as you say, costs are going up as well. And I think we need to come up with a sane policy where we come back to the council and cap what deficit you want to bring to. 2 million, 3 million, 9 and 12 and 14 is not sustainable. And that's my concern.
Absolutely.
Mr. Gas, then Mr. Florin.
I think this kind of highlights the need for policies like the one I proposed earlier or others. I'm a little dismayed when I read this and this is a great structurally balanced budget, that's a great policy, that's what we should strive for. But here we are talking about how many millions over do we want to not meet that by? And when, every year, we just accept that, I think it's a problem. You know, obviously, there's no magic switch that's gonna make up 9 or 12 million or whatever it may be this year. But I just feel like we need to do more to try to achieve that, that policy. Because we're obviously way out of compliance with the policy as currently. So I agree with Jay, I think a limit on how much out of compliance we can be with this. Nowhere near the 9 million mark would be a good step in the right direction. But I think this, just as a prime example of that, what we're doing is not working. You know, we raised the taxes last year to pay for some stuff we did. Every time we do this, it's making it harder on the people. And I'm not suggesting that we don't pick up people's garbage or pick them up in the ambulance. But I'm suggesting that I think we get caught up, really good ideas that all come with a price tag. And at the end of the day, it's the citizens paying for it. And it's the poorest and the, the, the most poor citizens who are affected the most, who still do pay taxes. So I just think we need to take some bigger steps towards trying to meet this policy. And I think this year, going in with a, a little bit of a plan, going into the budget cycle, we need to be ready to make some more serious, for lack of a better word, sacrifices, because we gotta make big changes. So I hope we can get much closer to being in compliance with this policy and, and as timely manner, become in compliance with it.
It's definitely the goal to get closer, you know, not to get further away.
So just as we get closer, then, I would like to see an elaboration for the sake of the community on what it is that they may be asked to do without or to do with less of. I'm sure that you and all of the department heads will prioritize things as, as needed. But this is the heads up that the community needs. So that they understand going forward, the symbiosis of, you know, you get what you pay for, I guess, right? And, and what you have available, so.
I have two questions for the manager. One, how do you allocate how much each department gets budgeted?
That's based on our, we have a line item budget, and so it's based on our historical spending. So what has been established in the past?
So each department is just automatically gonna get this they always have, kind of?
Typically, yes, because those are the services and operations we provide today. So our budget is presented in such a way that this is what is needed to continue the current services provided today. A zero-lease budget, those became very popular in the crash around 2007, 2008. You saw them a lot in California. Those were a bear. And pretty much what every council and finance director came back and said was, you have $0. You have to justify to me where everything's gonna go. You have to tell me exactly how many police officers you're gonna have, what they're gonna do, what they're gonna perform, what the expectation is. And it was a really interesting challenge. But the governments were going bankrupt. And so that's, that was sort of the big reset button. We, our budget's not big enough to do something like that. That's usually something you're looking at a billion-dollar budget or 500-million-dollar budget. So we use a line item budget. And it's just based on, if we were to provide all the services we provide today for tomorrow, this is what it's gonna cost. Then you have the capital we're gonna do in addition to, or if you want to expand services, you know, just as we talked about, an additional police officer. If you wanted more services, this is what the cost is gonna be.
And then my second question is, I know when we go to the state, we always have our priorities. So I'm wondering if we could start with some kind of base and then have the departments have prioritize things that go over that base.
As far as operationally, I think we're, we're kind of just at the base right now. We really haven't asked anything above and beyond what's being divided today. Capital-wise, that's what we do. We, we do prioritize, prioritize our C I P, what's important to us. You know, we're not gonna buy a police assault vehicle. We're going to make sure we have safety equipment. You know, that's a priority for us. So, so the C I P, it does show, operationally, are you saying, what are you willing to give up operationally?
Well, like, we had, well, can you, what can you cut? You know, we can cut this kind of stuff.
And it's typically capital for projects, things like that. Yeah, absolutely. So that brings me back to that section three where it talks about strategic objectives. These are the places, you know, we could prioritize. And I put this list based on our conversations. And I put it in a priority that I thought of as just a budget manager, that people and property are always gonna come first. I mean, that's, and that's just based on, that's how FEMA set up also. You know, when, when everything hits the fan and the world is ending, what do you protect first? It's people and property. And so we could prioritize the, these objectives to what isn't. Because if something falls out of this objective list, maybe it's just a maybe it's a, a feel-good effort like having a giant sign welcoming people. That really doesn't fall into any of these strategic objectives, so that would be the first thing that fell out of the budget. So I think that's kind of what you're leading to, is how do we, as department heads, know what to draw? And so these objectives is what we would look at first. So what I imagine in the future, and we haven't done this before, is when I submit my budget, I'm gonna say, this portion of my operations meets the protecting people and property, enhancing livability and maintaining infrastructure. You know, like, this is why I'm asking for this money. It's gonna meet these strategic objectives, because this is how we're gonna get to a strategic business plan eventually. Because that's what we're gonna have to do. You're gonna have to tie your budget to that business plan. So this is just a first start of it. So I think that kind of answers. If I have a budget request that doesn't meet any of these strategic objectives, then that's the first thing that I, as a manager, am gonna cut from that department.
Thank you.
Yeah. So I think one of the things I found, like, in the revenue and taxation section, we talk about being a first city, and so we're limited on what we can maximize in property. And I also agree, I'm not really big on taxing community members, let alone always putting the heat on community members in taxes. But I also think that there's several taxes that we we do get, but we're not maximizing what we should be getting. And that includes bed tax. And that needs to come back among head tax and port fees. Because we're a business when it comes to that. And if we're gonna, if we're gonna sit here and talk about not in putting the pressure on the community, then we need to talk about who should be paying their fair share and who should be paying for the port that they use as a business. And, and then also the bed tax. Even if we raise it, it hasn't been raised in what, nine, 10 years? So we need a, a schedule of these particular taxes going up. And I don't expect to see them raised on any business like boom, like, we're gonna go 65%. Like, I know when the harbors reported, it was to maximize costs, but we're talking about 15%. Now, again, and we've talked about this over the years, is making sure that we have these things lined out so that they're being raised to maximize costs and maintenance and the above. And we also know that we're never gonna make the amount of money to do the work without some form of grant or loan. And honestly, putting that loan, this community's not gonna go for that. And I wouldn't, I would never ask the community to go for that. Because honestly, multimillion-dollar businesses, billion-dollar businesses should be, they're the ones that use that. So they're the ones that should be paying to lease that. And so I think those, those, I don't see those in here. I see them mentioned, but I do not see them as important line items, and I think they need to be.
I can absolutely expand on that, then, in, in this policy. Because I did leave them very limited.
Just a structural question for you, Your Honor, and I don't know the answer. But Ms. Gage did mention bringing back the bed tax. And given that that was back to our agenda and failed, what's the policy on that? Can it, can you bring the same item back? Is there a time limit on that?
I think it just has to be indifferent.
Different wording.
The same, the same policy could be brought back most immediately. That's good to know. That's good to know.
If I can clarify, it has to be, like Kim said, not just different wording, it has to be a different approach completely. So I can't say, I want to increase the transient tax by $3. And then it fails, so let's bring it back for $12. Or, you know, it has to be something different. That maybe we're gonna restructure the way we use the transient tax and encode, we're gonna change the code to say, perhaps we're dedicating X amount of dollars instead to a different, something different size of Ted Fary. And to do so, we need to increase the tax by X. So you can, as long as it's a different discussion, a different standard.
How, how long is that good for? If you can't bring it back?
I don't know, I've never.
Thought it was one year.
Yeah.
One cycle.
I can't answer that one.
But we, but we have, we have it already in our policy. So you could make it where instead of it staying stagnant, as, you know, you have an increase of like, say, 1% over, like we did with the
And that would be a substantive difference from the original proposal, just $2.
Yeah.
That would be a difference.
So you could do a structure.
A big increase.
I just, not to get off in the weeds, I just, I do have a little bit of power. This topic was brought to the council and the council chose not to increase the tax. I just, but I guess we could talk about it again. I just ought to dig into the Robert Rule of Order that we all like so much and see what the actual word is on that. Because I don't know all stuff like that.
My, again, the budget policy. Last year, we asked for cuts. We asked for items that, I mean, we kept hearing from management, oh, this is a placeholder, this is a placeholder. I'd like to see that go away. Justify why we are asking monies and for capital expenditure, whether those capital projects are achievable. Because, I mean, we asked at one point to cut the budget for each department for 10% or 20%. I don't remember what we asked. And we were told over and over again, this money is held as a placeholder. In the next budget cycle, I want to see that go away. Justify what we are spending for, not what we might have to spend for.
Yeah, that was also on my list of things to look at. Is the placeholder factor, because we hear all the time, well, we're not gonna spend all this money. Like, we know today that we're not gonna spend the whole budget. So then why do we put it in there? I understand emergencies happen, but that's why we're here to bring, like you had to approve some money last week to take care of, I think, risk management increases, like, and that was totally, those are acceptable things to come back that are out of our control and whatnot. But I do agree that in our budget, these placeholders that we've had for decades and decades and decades need to go. And we need actual things that we're gonna be spending on so that we do know a legitimate budget. So that when we sit here and we have these things come up, we don't have to levy and go, well, we have this much deficit, but we don't know how much of that we're not gonna spend. So do we have room to, you know, take care of this important project? Or like a fire truck that we had talked about? You know, it would make those clear decisions to the council a little bit easier and more defined later on, because you're not sitting here going, well, we have this debt, but we don't think we'll have that debt, but we don't know how much. And so placeholders for me would like to leave the budget. Either use it, put it in there. If you're actually gonna use it, leave it out if you haven't used it for the last five years. Maybe that's it. If it hasn't been touched for five years, it goes. Just because I do agree with that. And I absolutely believe that's completely valid and that'll give us a chance to go in and really tighten that a bit. I know in some situations, like for a capital purchase, we'll put it in there in the budget. And I know our deficit was pretty large. And I remember sharing with the council, I know it looks large, but a lot of this we're gonna roll over because we're not gonna get this truck this year. Like, we're gonna budget for it because we need to have it in the budget to award appropriation or procurement. But we know we're not gonna spend it because it's gonna take two years to design or build out or, you know, things like that. But I think we can definitely tighten that up.
Follow up then on that is if we do have these cases where we know we're not going to spend, it would be nice to have like a list with numbers that says, hey, guys, we have to have this in here because of XYZ. But the chances of us actually being, having to pay that funds isn't there. That would, for me, be super helpful to have a collective list of saying, okay, really, these two, this $2 million, we just have to have here to move forward in the process versus we're spending it out this year. I don't know what others think on that, but that would be super helpful if I'm sitting here to make that decision.
Sounds like a list of placeholders. Sorry, but that's kind of what, isn't that kind of another way of saying what you wanted to do?
So I'll continue on that. So placeholder, there are certain placeholders in like the office area that is just in there just because. They don't know if they'll need it or not. It doesn't have to do with a CIP. It's been there. I mean, it's been stated by the finance director and manager, while it's always been there, we just haven't used it. Those are the placeholders that need to go. CIPs, which is what you're referring to on vehicle acquisition or things like that. I, I understand the CIP being there and not knowing if it's going to go or not. And usually those are in the CIP notes. But in the rest of our operational budget, there's just placeholders there that they have personally told us that they haven't spent. And that haven't been touched for years and years, but they're still in there just because. Those are the placeholders I'm more referencing. And I can clarify with operation budget versus CIP, if that would be helpful. But it, still in the CIP projects, it would be really helpful to have a collective list that says, we need this for acquisition purposes or whatnot. But the intention is we're probably not going to spend it or have a ballpark figure. This is what we're collectively not gonna be spending out of the general fund or the public works fund. With our new budget policy, we aren't going to be going line by line. So these, this information being collective and presented at the budget time will help make the picture clearer without having to do line items.
Hopefully Michelle doesn't throw anything at the back of my head when I say this. But one thing we can do is what I've seen in the past, and I'll also have to sit with finance. And this, I'm just bawling here, this is not, that's something I want to put out on the, on the table for, we're gonna, we can certainly do it. But what I have seen before is we actually create a, can't remember the name. I think we called it the Unknown Liabilities Fund. I can't remember what we named it, but we stuck those placeholders in that fund. Like every year we budgeted 20,000, or I'll say 100,000 was going to the Vehicle Acquisition Fund to buy all these vehicles for government. And so every, you know, police budget, everybody was putting in a chunk of money for the Vehicle Acquisition Fund to buy all our cars. Because if they didn't come in, that money held in the fund. We still took it out of the general fund and it sat in the Vehicle Acquisition Fund. We also had one that was like a possible liability fund. I can't remember what it was called, but we put things in there, like we had a potential lawsuit that we thought we were gonna have to pay out. We probably owe, you know, $100,000. But we knew we weren't gonna pay it out for another year or two because we were in the middle of litigation. So we stuck it in the sort of potential liability fund. So we took it out of the general fund, but it sat there. So the, the expense to the general fund is realized in that fiscal year. So it happened, but then it moved and it sat here. So instead of rolling over those placeholders, perhaps we can come up with a mechanism where they're realized in one year and then they sit in that sort of, I don't know what to call it, fun. But again, that's just bawling and I'll sit with finance. And then we could eliminate that. Well, we've always put it in there just in case because this happened 15 years ago. Here's now the just in case fund and we're not budgeting it every year. We've moved it once and went fiscal year and sits there. And then we don't have to recognize that. But that, that'll be a discussion with finance. And maybe that's a way to approach it.
Further discussion on any three budget policies.
One more item, don't need to get too carried away with it, but just, I would like a proposal to review programs, expenses and positions annually to determine whether said programs and expenses are necessary and needed moving into the future. And the same rationale as before. What comes to mind is the COVID era. As we all know, there were positions and duties that were needed during that time that obviously aren't needed. That's just an example. So just to keep an eye on things. And if maybe staff determines that there's a, something that's no longer needed, maybe we can recognize that. So it's kind of broad and loose purposely. And I don't want it to be a big task that takes all your time, but just to keep an eye on it.
For clarification, for Councilmember Gass, is this a manager duty or council duty?
I would say probably department heads under the jurisdiction of the manager.
Okay, perfect.
And Councilmember Gass, you'll actually see that evolve quite a bit when we have a strategic plan. Because you're gonna have to say, how does this program tie to the strategic plan? How is your program tying to the objectives, the strategic objectives in the city? So if I have a program that just makes me feel good, but it doesn't tie to any of the objectives set by the council, that's, again, that's an obvious eight. You're not, you've got, and when you see a budget built on your strategic plan, you actually see that. Like this is program parking enforcement. It ties to the strategic plan, meeting objectives A, B, and F. So you will see that come to, but so I think I can come up with something that references somewhat in a little way.
Reserve fund balance policy.
So the reserve fund balance, this is already set by resolution as well as council policy. So everything in here is we want three months of operations or 25% of budget expenditures in every fund. This is something that you've already passed in March 2013 as a council. There's also an additional reference to the KPU fund balance policy. Because it's got this weird little 12% thing in there. I left it because by meeting what was passed in the fund balance policy, you're gonna meet what was passed in the KPU fund's policy. So it's just in there referenced. If these are items you'd like to change to see larger fund balances, those are something we'd have to do to not reverse, but to edit past council action.
I would like to see a more consistent amount of operations. Like I think the wastewater fund, boat harbor fund, they talk about six months of operations. I, I think that might be a good number. And the only reason I say that is I just go back to 2020 when we had, you know, some months that it was dire that even our sales tax revenue wasn't great coming in. And so I just having that six months, if God forbid, anything were to happen, such as something like COVID again, we know that we have a little bit more buffer versus the three month. Because we went from, we're okay to it's critical real fast. Because we didn't have enough saves. And so I would like to see all of our, all of our funds have a, try to achieve a six month budget expenditure. So I don't know, I was just throwing out, I think some of these have it. So it's not all of them, but general fund, public works, sales tax, it would be nice to have that fund balance equal to six months. Obviously not achievable here, but a goal to work towards.
And I can add a line, you know, like it is, we'll work toward a six month fund balance in all funds, you know, without making it, you know, just like a goal, like there are no problems getting to six months. That would be a goal. So I, and you want to be careful because you want to make sure you're, you're not making your fund balance so aggressive that you're, you're having to do that by increasing rates. So, you know, we want to be careful with that, that I saw one utility, it wasn't mine, thank goodness, but they were so aggressive about getting their fund balance high that they increased rates. And that didn't make any sense, because why am I paying as a current utility customer for your future utility customer projects? That's essentially what was happening, you're overcharging my rate in that sense. So it's just, it's a good balance, it's a delicate balance. But I think there's nothing wrong with making a policy statement. Like ultimately, we, we find, ultimately, we will acknowledge fiscal, fiscal success if we had six months in every fund. You know, like just a statement very general like that without an actual, you have to do this.
KPU essentially did that back in the 90s, early 90s. And they ended up with a huge, beyond, beyond huge fund balance, which actually led to.
Which tells you that your rates are too high.
Where'd that go?
Interestingly enough, the people who really were, who got elected to take care of that ended up making it worse. I won't say who, but.
If you have a high fund balance in the utility, then you're charging too much.
That was clear.
So I'm, I'm just wondering why there is the disparity between the six month, three month, five month? Is it because the operation costs are more in those, or the, toward the, sorry, the CIPs?
Typically, it's because the revenues are volatile. And that would be my guess, is we had some sort of revenue volatility back in 2013. I don't know if you guys know what the genesis of that was? I could, sorry, sorry, Michelle, if I could call on you, because I don't do.
It's more to do with the So work, for example, doesn't have any cruise ships coming in until April May, but you still have costs that you have to pay up. So it really has more to do with the fund and then we receive those revenues.
But like wastewater has a, or wait, wastewater is one of solid waste. So wastewater, did the wastewater fund has a six month too?
And that one, I'm not 100% sure on. I would have, is that true?
It didn't make sense.
That might be.
Okay.
The residents pay for it. So it's, I guess you could look at the fact that there are fish processing plants that only operate during the summer months. So maybe that has more to do with it. And then there are, there is an influx of people that come into town. And wastewater, because it is only wastewater, whereas KPU, you have electric telecom and water. So it's not just water that's funding that department all year.
Not sure.
Yep, it's six months.
So as I mentioned, this is, this is really just straight out of council action in the past. And I can add some language of, from Council Bradbury's suggestion that, you know, this fiscal success would be a six month fund balance. The process.
Ms. Gage.
I think on wastewater, if you look back, historically, it's to cover costs in the winter with broken pipes. And issues that come, come up during the winter. And they tend to get a lot more because of it. I don't know. That's my guess, because, especially this last winter.
The next one is debt. And what I did is just put in an explanation of when we would use debt as well as the debt ratio goals that are already set forth. None were set really for KPU under policy or past policy. So what I did is what's in red, I just added that the same financial ratio goals that Resolution 901645 would be applicable to KPU. So what's applicable to general government for debt would be applicable to KPU. And, and I think all that KPU references, oh, I'm sorry, the reverse. KPU had the debt statements and general government did not. So I'm sorry, I said that backwards. So we did have a resolution saying this is what the debt ratios will be for KPU. And then I just added a line that we'll look at the same ratios for general government. Debt ratios are, are, like, we won't have a debt equity ratio for our general government because you're not supposed to have an owner's equity in, whereas KPU would. We'd have our fund balances in order to run the utility. So it's kind of a weird statement to put in for a non-investor owned utility, but it is in the resolution, so I included it in there. And just keeping a good debt service coverage range, this is just good practice. And it's pretty consistent with what we do today. Something that we are gonna, and you'll see it in our next, when we Something that we are gonna, and you'll see it in our next, when we're asking to issue some more debt for the water department. Something what I'd like to see us do is get into a good debt cycle program, and that means um every, let's say every five years, one of our bond issues retires, then it's gonna be immediately replaced with a new bond issue, but it doesn't mean increased rates or increased taxes. We're gonna just take our current revenue savings uh from that initial debt payment and then apply it to a new debt payment. So we're cycling and not coming back and telling customers, well, now we need to do, issue more debt, now we need to issue more debt. We actually have a scheduled cycle for all, and we typically do it with general obligation bonds, but I'd like to see us cycling debt on everything. That's not really a policy thing, but the policy would guide that practice, which is keeping a safe debt ratio. Okay, the big one, revenue and taxation. So, the item in red, this is what I heard from council, and so if I did not articulate it correctly, please let me know your thoughts. And it is the goal of this policy to ensure the city of Ketchikan will maintain the lowest taxation rates consistent with quality services. So in other words, we're gonna try to keep rates as low as possible, but we're still gonna provide what we need. I know it doesn't, it seems like an obvious statement, like, of course you'd want your rates to be low and, and provide quality services, but it really does articulate that commitment from our organization, that it's our job to try to keep our rates as low as possible. And there's another statement in here where we'll look for money, all funding, possible funding sources, whether it be grants or other items. You know, there's a statement in there that we will aggressively go after those kinds of things. In here, there's also, the council has already passed the statement that says KPU will maintain the lowest utility rates to rate pairs consistent with quality service and maintain a two-year rate horizon. We haven't really done that. We've kind of been reactive in our rate setting, so. I'll be coming to you later with the whole rate setting policy and process, that'll, that'll be coming down the pike, but once we get through the budget first. And then um there's the statement that what we do today is using historic trend analysis to establish baseline estimates of our revenue, and then incorporating proposed tax increases where applicable. So, the first one is, do you, I wanna hear from council, is that a good statement in that it's the goal to ensure that we have the lowest taxation rates consistent services? Because that's really mirroring what we've already passed for KPU. The next one was property taxes, and I did put language in here, like, this is what property tax is, and this is where it falls in our, our code, and it was easier for my brain, instead of having to keep looking at everything, to put it all in one place. And that way, if we do make changes, I know where to look in the, in the future. So, as you know, we don't come anywhere close to the thirty mils that are allowed for us to pass on state law. You know, we're not Anchorage, we use sales tax as well as property tax in order to balance our taxation. So, I put a limit in here that if we ever consider any tax increases, that we're limiting it to one mil or less in a single fiscal year. So maybe we come back and say we need a mil rate increase of one mil over the next five years, I, I don't know what that's gonna look like, but but I need to hear from the council, and what I did is, I wrote, in years assessed property values have increased resulting in unanticipated increased revenue, then the council will hold the tax levy rate flat, because that's what you've done in the past two years. You know, you've seen property tax valuations have come up, and so you've held that, that mil levy flat. So this is where, I'm interested, to me, based on your conversations, and I'm not saying this policy is telling us, hey, let's go increase taxes by one mil, I'm saying that whatever we do, and we try to make the budget work, if we have to increase something because of a new collective bargaining agreement, or if we have to increase revenue for unanticipated expenses, like I remember once in New Mexico, there was zero insurers, one year, and it wasn't just New Mexico, it was pretty much every agency. Because of what was happening with police officers, no municipality or county could buy insurance for jail. There, there was none, there was no insurer, we had to get on our knees and beg, borrow, and plead to get insurers, and we paid through the nose to do it because of the, the detention center lawsuits. And so, you know, those things kind of happen, and, and we may have to react. So I'm not saying that if by approving this one mil or less, that we would actually do it, but it gives us as staff a limit to know that this is as high as we can even ask the council.
Mr. Floridensberg. Is there an anticipated increase in revenue? What I'm asking is, every year assessments go up, so when you're talking about the unanticipated increased revenue, we won't raise the property tax, which is great, but should there be some sort of specific qualifier? If the city gets nineteen dollars more in unanticipated revenues, that's, that's worthless, right? If it's five million dollars, we don't need to raise taxes. So, is there some formula that that can be tied to, or is the, are we already, you guys as staff, are you already looking at, we think assessments will increase X? Are you, are you factoring that in every year or not?
I'll have to defer to Michelle, the way I understand the borough, they do their reassessment every four years, and um, I'm not sure if they do it by district.
Sections.
Yeah, it's a section every year. Um, I also know that in the state of Alaska, our property tax amount is actually capped. Yeah, we're, we're well below it, but I thought that was new too, that we have to cap our state cap on property taxes. There is a point where you can't pay more than, I think fifteen hundred bucks in property taxes, you never will.
So, when it comes time for the levy, we, we get the information from the borough that says this is what the values are looking like before they make their final adjustments. So, they give that to us, we plug it in to look at, okay, based on our mill rate right now, what does that mean for us and the revenues we projected?
Okay.
So, um, it, in the budget, we have a schedule and it shows back to two thousand three, so twenty years worth of mill rate data. So, we had six point four in two thousand six, two thousand seven, we went back down to six point one. I think there was a jump there. Um, and then, again, it, it increased um to six point two in two thousand eleven, then went up to six point seven, went back down in two thousand eighteen to six point six. So we are looking at that. So if there are big differences, obviously, if there is a comp plan and they say, you guys say we wanna use property tax, and we propose that we're going to increase the mill rate, depending, I don't know if you'd necessarily wanna increase the mill rate until we know what those property values would be.
Of course.
And then we bring that back to you.
Okay, thank you.
I'll, I'll have to ask you, historically, I know when we had the crash in two thousand eight, we saw major drops in property values down south. I don't know if that happened up here?
Yeah.
When the assessments came back and.
I mean, huge.
Yeah, I would call it a major. Property, property rates never drop in Ketchikan. It comes right down to it, at least not dramatically, but, yeah, there, there was adjustment. There wasn't like, farther north, Anchorage saw huge, huge drops.
Um, I, I like this statement, I would like to see maybe a half a mil or less for a single fiscal year. Just, and I'm glad she read out the um mill rates just now, because it does seem like if the adjustments are made, it's usually within that, that amount. And so I, I would like to see a little less than one mil um for a single fiscal year. So, that, but other than that, I, I like having it in there. I think it's great.
Yeah, I was kind of thinking the same thing. I, I, I don't like the idea of having that one mil in there because people might have a tendency to want to fund to the limit. And it kind of scares me to have that.
Sweet little period, funding the cap, but the schools are because of all of them.
Yes, exactly. And I, and I think we could probably do it if we just said, you know, if we need a mil, then a half a mil this year and a half a mil the next year could probably um tide us over anyway, I was thinking.
Yes, I guess, like I say, I agree.
And, and Michelle just informed me, point one mil, just point one, is about eighty, ninety thousand dollars. That's, that's all it generates.
Excuse me?
Point one mil.
Is about how much?
Eighty to ninety thousand.
So then point five would be a little under five hundred thousand.
Four hundred thousand.
Yeah.
Is that something council wants to discuss during the meeting, like, when you adopt the policy, or?
Yeah, bring, bring something back to us, and we'll, 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 we'll argue at the point then.
I'll, I'll make a note, though, that that's the proposal.
Any other questions about? Taxes?
Not mill rate.
The next one is the sales tax, and so I've I've just made the statement of our use of the seasonal sales tax, and I, I do wanna say, I was very impressed by the council and the staff's effort to do this last year. I know it caused a lot of headaches and consternation, but it really did levelize your taxation of your citizens throughout the entire year. I know, like, I wish I could buy my mattress in the time, but I had to buy it now. Um, but it really does levelize the tax for your year-round citizens and capture as much as possible in the revenue for the seasonal, so. That was really clever and impressive, and, and so I just reiterated in the po, in the policy, because what we're trying to do is go back to that, ensuring consistent funding for the city with the lowest impact to our residents, is what, is what you did. You kind of averaged and levelized after the, the year, so I, I just reiterated that, that policy thought. And then I, again, just put the point five percent limit at a number. And I put it as an aggregated number, because that's kind of what we did this year, is we sort of went up point five percent by doing the seasonal sales tax. And I didn't realize the state no longer limited what you could charge in sales tax, that would have been something too. I didn't know when that came off the books, so I discovered it.
And I know that, well, never mind, there's no answer for my question right now. Sorry. Rethought.
Doesn't mean it can't be asked.
Well, I was just saying, like, um, I guess for me, I'm very curious on did we actually capitalize on more funds with the seasonal sales tax? Um, instituting the singles, uh, the seasonal sales tax, um, obviously you won't know that till the end of the sea, or year, but I just, I'm really curious to know how that factored out, like, I mean, we, we know how much sales tax revenue is coming in, um, if it was to be, you know, the flat fee year round, we know what we'd make off of, you know, sales. So I'm just curious, it's like, did we truly make more money, or did we just do this to create more work for everyone? And, you know what I mean, I just, I wonder, truly, it's the first year we've done it, I'm just wondering how it's truly balancing out.
I think, Michelle, correct me if I'm wrong, we could probably take the revenue reports at the end of the year, obviously, and go back and say, what if we just did five and a half year round, what would the result be? Would we be able to see that?
We could certainly do that, where I'm keeping track of, we, we give the detail for the three percent residential, so I wasn't sure if we were gonna actually get that if we pushed into all the other sales. But we are, that is separated out, so we will have that information, we will have um the, obviously, the annual sales, and that's what we did when we estimated what revenues we thought we would get, is we took each quarter individually and applied the tax rate. I didn't just take the total and say, well, on average, this is what it would be, I took it by quarter and sailed by quarter to estimate what we'd get. So I am also very curious to know what we are going to get after that, but I was really surprised at the number, and I thought, oh, it's gonna make a difference. No, it does, and it was surprising how much more revenue, based on sales, of course. Those sales come into fruition, then, of course, that's what, that's what's important, if we see that, and what I've heard, sales are good.
Is it possible to get the finance director a seat here at the table?
Oh, yeah.
So that she's recorded and doesn't have to keep going up, down, up, down, so that the public can also hear?
Oh, my.
Sorry. Well, just I mean, we're talking about finances, it would just be nice to, just to have you here and not running back and forth. Sorry.
Um, the same is true of the marijuana sales tax, I just put a limit of, limited to one percent or less in a single fiscal year. And again, that was just a good place to put our number based on what we've heard. Um, and I'll use an example of this last budget, we estimated moving the marijuana sales tax from five percent to nine percent when we did the budget assumptions, and that four percent increase seems pretty whole, like, pretty excessive, and I, I don't know that that was something the council really is a hundred percent comfortable with, so I, I put in one percent.
My thought on this, and I'm just totally throwing this out there, is I'm wondering if we need to find different revenue source for um, like, our homeless services, and, you know, have this one that is gonna generate money regularly. Um, just with, as we've heard, marijuana sales kind of is not stabilized, um, doesn't sound like it's gonna stabilize anything soon, and just maybe goes down. And so I'm just, I'm concerned, I mean, obviously, we have a housing coordinator coming up, so that could change things, but I'm just wondering if through the grant processes for these homeless population and humanitarian grant, if we should be earmarking certain organizations, kind of like the borough did, that are not part of the grant process, that is, like, we know that they're coming, we know we need to fund them, uh, it's homeless services or whatnot. I'm just wondering if maybe we should kind of change the, the structure of what the marijuana sales tax actually goes to. Now, I don't know what where we grab the other money from, but I'm just wondering if we need to kind of change that structure. Um, cause I, I personally don't think the path in First City Homeless Shelter should be going head-to-head for money. Uh, I mean, each one serves a different population, and um, they're doing a service, so I think earmarking, saying, you know, this is your money and this is your money, and don't go head-to-head, like we had in the past. I think that is important in um that process, there might be others that maybe need to be involved in that, and more so earmarked versus grants, uh, grant focus like the other University players and Arts Council and things that kind of are apples to oranges. So, um, I'm just wondering if maybe we kind of need to restructure the purpose of marijuana sales tax. I don't know if this is time to say that, but.
Mr. Tom.
I think I agree with Councilwoman Bradbury again, I think I would request management bring back to us what we can do, restructure how we use the collection of marijuana tax funds.
May I engage a little discourse with my colleagues here? Please do, before we jump into that, do you guys have any bright ideas on where the money would come from, because the homeless money is another item that seems to be drastically increasing. And if we say we're no longer gonna use marijuana money for it, I just, I'm curious where it would come from.
I think that's why I said, uh, that management bring back a study to us how we can use those funds. My reference was not taking away the money from the marijuana sales tax that goes with the homeless services.
Oh, but to keep it as is and find another source to increase more money to services for the homeless.
I mean, I already said it once, I don't know exactly where we could pull the homeless service money from. Um, it's kind of my intention of throwing, throwing this out to, to Finance Director um, and to staff, I know Lacey has some great ideas on this topic, so. Um, I'm just saying, maybe we need to look at restructuring the, the use of this and also you know, how we, how we do our grant funding. And maybe it's we set a we set a, a number for each, like, for City Homeless Shelter, they get this percentage of whatever or this form. or this formula, that's what they get. It doesn't matter. You know, if needs go up, needs go down, but this is, this is their number. And so then they can project future path. This is what you need. I just, I just hate pitting these organizations that against each other for these funds when they are completely not equal. Like, we're literally choosing, are we going to do a food pantry? Or are we going to do arts and humanities? Like, they're apples to oranges. They both need funding, but they shouldn't be up against each other. And so I'm just wondering restructuring and taking kind of our necessity items out. I don't know. I'm just throwing it out there. Just throwing it out there. That's all. Just an idea.
Are you saying that the money that we do bring in from marijuana sales tax that you would like to say annually fifty percent or a hundred percent of that is used every year for certain purposes? Or because we also had the Marijuana Sales Tax Fund funding to go to the police operations. So that was something that was decided by the council to do that because they had increased call volume. So are you asking for that kind of formula? So the funds that we do receive, we allocate it this way? Or are you asking for?
To be honest, I'm asking for your recommendation. I just would like I just would like formulas tied to these entities that we know we have to fund every year. We have to. If we don't fund them, they're going to potentially not be able to make ends meet. So instead of saying, okay, we have this set money, we're gonna, you know, fight back and forth to see who gets funding, you know, setting numbers. And is that a a set percentage? Is that a set? I I don't know. Again, you know these numbers way better than I do. I'm just wondering, maybe you don't see anything needs to change. I just don't like how we pit people against each other for this money. That's all.
Mr. Tom. Yeah, I think, I'll say it again. I think management and finance will bring back a study to us how we can do this more effectively.
I think we have some ideas.
Mr. Kitcher.
Yeah, I I would also like to see whether or not there's grant funding that the city can go for that will offset the costs of these programs. And that, and also at the police department, so that maybe we could use more funding towards the actual homeless program. Either way, I know there are grants. I know that there are grants that PATH could apply for with, if the city assisted.
For the fiscal agent.
Yeah.
And that will be the goal of the Rural Housing Coordinator, to say, you know, I I'll keep picking on CDBG funds because those are not the easiest to get, but they're they're very, very readily available. If our Rural Housing Coordinator was helping them, so the city is the fiscal agent for those CDBG funds, then Wish or PATH or First City Homeless could utilize that five hundred thousand dollars under that program.
However, when would we be getting that coordinator? Because at this point, the next couple of years are kind of crucial in those programs.
I just got the MOA not yesterday, the day before. And so they sent me all the sample MOAs. I've got to finish out the scope. And then I'll be bringing that to council. We finished the job description, Marie, and the recommendations, so that's ready to go. And then hopefully we'll have a final MOA. I want to say within the next two weeks. So it, because they have to get funding from the Alaska Mental Health Trust to the housing corporation. I can't remember all the names, and then and then to us. So it's going through that path now. All right. The next one was enterprise rates. I just put in some placeholder statements in here that, you know, users have to pay their fair share of program costs. This is just a concept that it should be an ever utility rate. In other words, residential rate payers should not be subsidizing commercial rate payers and vice versa. You know, commercial rate payers shouldn't subsidize residential. I also put in the statement that we should do rate reviews every five years. And I think I put rate studies, but we can call it a rate review to ensure that our revenues are sufficient and really do that five-year projection. And then we want to make sure that our rates and fees are covering the cost of delivery. So in other words, our property taxes aren't subsidizing or well, I guess in KPU it'd be different. Let's say in KPU, our telecom customers should not be subsidizing our water customers. Like, you should be paying a hundred percent of your service. You shouldn't be tell charges more for internet. And I'm not saying that's what we do, but we want to make sure we're clear. Because KPU is a a fund, we're not charging more for internet in order to cover water or electric or or whatever. We're not charging more power to cover water. In addition to that, fees and services should not generate money in excess of costs. So that's going back to the concept of we're not here to make money like an investor-owned utility. And that fees could be less than a hundred percent if we're looking at market forces. So in other words, if I have to be competitive with telecom in order to be able to provide the service, it may be a little bit lower. So maybe have to be subsidized in some other way or through grants or or things like that, that we just have to recognize it. I didn't put too much in the rates because we really do need a good rate-setting policy and process. And what I envisioned is going to take some time to develop. But I would like to see a very public process where we do have a series of public hearings ahead of bringing rate adjustments to council. I liked it for the entities I've worked with where you do public advisory committees, almost like an advisory board or a rate-setting board that comes in and listens to the public and gets that input and kind of has that sort of, I don't want to say battle with staff, but really holds the staff's feet to the fire of why do you need to increase these rates on behalf of the public before it comes to council? So it's it's something that's been vetted and we've had public input ahead of time. So that, but so I didn't put much here because that is something I'd like to see developed later.
Uh, again, I'm just throwing some things out there. One of the things that I've been thinking a lot on for our rate structure, mostly, I think it comes to mine and per se, like the harbor, the port, kind of the facilities that both Alaskans and non-Alaskans use. I'm almost wondering if there's a way to structure our rates for Alaskans versus out-of-state users. And I know it creates a lot of work, but I'm just thinking, like, for instance, the harbors, we just saw that report that, you know, how much it needs to increase. But you know, do we want to raise our our rates on our, you know, Alaskan users or Alaska fishermen who are using our harbors, the same as people who come up from Washington use our harbors? I'm just wondering if that's a way, because we do talk about, we don't want to overburden our our people. So like, our people in this community and even in Alaska. I'm wondering if in in cases where things are used by non-locals and locals or Alaskans versus non-Alaskans, because that would probably be easiest. If maybe we look at more structures like that, and that would also help our Alaska fishermen out and, you know, give them a little bit of an upper hand in terms of operations to outside folks. So I, it's just something that it's kind of crossed my mind when that harbor rate study came out. I know it's probably a lot of work, but I just thought it would be nice to see that across our areas.
Uh, that's something I've always thought would be great, and I think it would be wonderful, but isn't that a violation of the protections laws? Non-constitutional?
It's interesting because yes and no. The state does it all the time by, it's like, for example, saying, you know, if 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 I live here, I can hunt for X amount of dollars. That said, when communities try to do it, they take the exact opposite point. So.
To clarify, though, and I I don't know if this can make a difference. I'm not, I'm wanting to say, like, if you have an Alaskan ID, because that's what the state does. If you have an Alaskan ID, even though you might not live in Ketchikan, you would get the Alaska rate versus if you do not have an Alaska ID, that you get the non-Alaska. So I think if you go, like, you have to be a resident, and I think that gets a little in the grips, and that's also just difficult in itself. But I'm just wondering if there is a loophole to allow the Alaskans a better rate in our harbors, but then out of state. I don't know. We're just, and that's just one thing that it's just easiest because it had just come up that I just thinking about it.
There's actually a different rate for people that come in. I think there's a different rate.
I don't think there is, is there?
Parts of harbors.
Temporary. There's a different rate.
The user type has a different rate, like, versus a permanent slip versus a day rate or a month rate or things like that. They're not based on who or where.
Just to go back to enterprise, uh, fund or enterprise taxes, has they been a rate study initiated?
No.
How long would that take? Or is that in the works?
It depends on how much money you want to pay. It can be done really quickly. If you pay it from highly, we can do it on our own if we want to take the time. The only one that's initiated thus far has been the Harbor Department. They initiated a rate study. We do need it. I think one was done for water five years ago.
Done related to metering a business company, but
Fifteen.
What we found with that group is there was, I think, one person in the company that was able to perform that rate study, and that person is no longer with that company. So we basically have to go back out and find another one. And I think that they, it was challenging at that point in time to find a company that would do it. And I don't know why, but.
Interesting, yeah.
There was one done when I first got to council.
Yes.
And that one was for wastewater, too.
Two thousand six.
That was, yeah.
So, follow.
Go ahead.
Uh, going back to KPU. You made an interesting observation or point where water subsidizes power, power subsidizes telecom. Is that happening now? Or each utility areas paying for itself?
Operationally, that doesn't happen. So operationally, water pays for itself, electric pays for itself. However, electric's in a major deficit. Water, not as much. They're pretty on par. However, we have to aggregate the KPU fund to make it look healthy. So in other words, if we broke out just the water fund, just the electric fund, just the telecom fund, they would not, telecom would probably look pretty healthy compared to everybody else. So the fact that we aggregate, when we stated in our financial statements in the budget as a fund total, it looks good. But if we were to break it out, we know that there's a deficit in electric. We know that there are deficits, but when we aggregate, it looks healthy. So as a fund, it's healthy. But that's because of telecom. If we were to actually have a water fund, which we have them separated, but we don't report it that way. We report KPU as from Big Fund.
Reserve that report in separately.
So in other words, telecom is carrying everybody?
It is on the fund balance, yes. Telecom is carrying everybody. So, but we don't actually use telecom. We don't use telecom revenue to pay for water operations. That's that's all separate. But when we aggregate the budget, telecom is bolstered, that's my balance.
Thank you.
Great. The next session, next section. The next section is sales tax allocations. This is all what's already been passed by council, everything that's in black as far as community grant program. The one thing I added in there was the technology investment program. And what it was saying is, you know, one point five cent percent of our total annual sales tax, not, you know, one point five percent of the tax rate, but of the actual revenue would go to information technology, network development and innovation. That's just a thing that I like. If we really want to push forward. When you make this, what I've seen is when you make your investment in technology, you avoid the server crashes and the switch crashes and those things that are devastating. You look for more efficient upgrades in things that work with new worlds, such as our online systems and payment system. We're trying to get into Laser Beach. That's the next purchase I'll be asking council for. Our revenues are coming in okay in order to do the online networking and online forms for customers. So it also decreases our cost of our insurance, because right now, our cybersecurity insurance is going to keep going up. We need more protection. And we do quite a bit now, but if we can show that we're actually contributing this money to network protection and we demonstrate that it's a budgeted item and a a priority of the council, it gives us a better rating on our insurance for cybersecurity. And for a dollar amount, it's about two hundred and fifty grand.
Um, so I have two statements here. One, I absolutely love this technology investment program. And the reason I like this is as we all know, it's very hard to fill positions currently. People just aren't really out there to work. And I know for me and my industry and and my business I work for, switching to this direction to expedite administrative work has been a huge help and relief on all of the staff that we, that are kind of double-taking. And I know it sounds simple, like the forms and, but there's forms within our city government even, like, I'm just going to use HR department because they have the most forms, that right now it's all typed out or it's handwritten and submitted and walked to an office. And where if you could cut out how much time it is taking to where they can just select, 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 submit, and it automatically goes. Or it automatically approves processes with customer relations. And it just takes out that human time would be beneficial, one, to the city in exp- expediting, but it would also be beneficial to our staff that are struggling to meet the demand because they can't fill their spot. So I'm in full support of this technology investment program. Two hundred and fifty thousand doesn't sound like a lot, but if you chip away at it every year, that that is a great option. Then my second thing is this hospital sales tax and other public work fund, number B. Do we have to have, I know with the new agreement with the hospital, do we have to have that one percent for the hospital, hospital facility? I'm just wondering, that number, is that needed? Obviously, there are projects right now. Is it a requirement or whatnot? I'm just curious.
I I know it's just in code, but I'll I'll ask Michelle.
So right now, the hospital sales tax fund pays about two point five million in debt service. And then four hundred and twenty thousand goes to the general fund. And I think a good portion of that is if there, if engineering is needed to work on the hospital in any way or any public work staff, then that helps fund those operations to be able to respond. I believe when we added the expansion, that there was a discussion at the council that they, or to the voters, may have been on the ballot, that we were going to have this one percent dedicated for that purpose. So until that debt is paid off, which is curious, who the residents may remember some of that. I don't know if the council remembers that yet. But I'm sure there are some residents that definitely remember that.
All right. Perfect. Thank you.
Skizlo, what do you have?
Um, yeah, I I am in love with the technology idea myself, too, and I'm so waiting for those electronic bill. I spend so much time shagging after KPU bills that I can't find for documentation. And thank goodness for auto pay, because I don't have to worry about them getting paid. But and and it when you're working on a piece of equipment that is old and slow, you know, it just takes more time and personnel is very expensive. And you can replace a lot of personnel with a good digital repertoire, I don't know. So. So uh, I, I'm a hundred percent for technology. We need to get out of the twentieth century and get on to the twenty first.
Were you next, Monica? No, okay.
Yeah, um, the technology piece is awesome. Um, one thing I will uh stress in that is that. I just filed my um taxes on my rental up in Kenai and it is all online. However, they also charge you the fee for using that process. So it was three dollars and ninety five cents to pay by credit card. Because I couldn't go into their shop. And they also do that with their, when you pay the water and sewer. It also, one of the things that I'm gonna bring this up again is that. All I get for my water and sewer, if there's a postcard. Instead of a big envelope with. All bunch of paper, it's just a postcard. And um, and when you pay that by, if I went in and paid it, it was ninety dollars. But it's a hundred and one dollars when I pay it online. So, I mean. The fee is definitely put back on the customer on how it's done.
As we move through payment assist, we hope we can start working with Comsoft to do that electronic billing. I, I know uh, we have payment assist in Los Prusas and I get my bill by email. So I don't even get a bill mailed to me, just the whole bill comes to me by email. So hopefully we can start.
So yeah, Kenai has implemented it just this year. It's a. It's a little, it's been kind of di- dicey getting used to it, but it, it also itemizes. So you hit the burrow. You put in your rental amount. You put in your rental amount for Kenai because they have the whole peninsula. Then you go down and you put in um. The amount and it will actually itemize out what your um, because they're, they have a cap on tax um of the first five hundred. So um of uh rental amount. So you only tax on the first five hundred. So then it just itemizes it through and you can. And it also sets it up so you can pay it quarterly, monthly, so.
I just want a clarification for me. I like, I like this concept very much, but I wondered if uh funds collected through this program could be utilized. To do something in the software upgrades that I know are substantial portions of many of the budget items from last, from the last cycle. Or if this is dedicated more toward the idea of creating new services, improving services that already exist.
No, absolutely. I, software would definitely be included in that. I'll, I'll make a note to that.
Thank you.
And that was part of my question, but then I also, you know, I hate this whole like computer replacement program thingy, but I understand you have to do it. Would that then be focused on this or from this? Because the only reason I say that, if we're gonna designate two hundred and fifty thousand potentially. Just use that number, um, then I, we want to be within our, our means. And so I just um. Because what I don't want to see is, okay, we're gonna say this technology investment program to cover these things. But then we also then have all of this because we're gonna need newer computers to function this program. And so then now we're double dipping on really this program because we need those newer computers because they can't process this. So I'm just wondering, is that going to be considered in part of this? So when it's structured and the funds are spent, we aren't causing us to spend more money in other areas. When implementing this stuff.
Originally, I was looking at this on a more global and enterprise scale, meaning this is a benefit to the entire organization. So this is a network protection or software upgrade or new tools like um. We're looking at, for example, a time sheet somewhere. So if everybody's not entering things by hand and by paper, which we do different ways for every single department. It's just one big global through the organization. So on the, the actual individual desktops and PCs. We charge those to the departments because that's the department's cost of doing business. So it, it's not really related to the global use of it. So I was looking more on the enterprise scale.
Follow up, then, then I just encourage uh you to be mindful. Of what you're implementing and how that is going to affect the cost of the departments. Um, in terms of operations, because I know we have some ancient computers that probably are gonna freak out when you try to. Do something. So I just want, please be cautious about.
So this section is also an opportunity, um, if the council has something that you would like for us to indicate in. And I just had this thought randomly the other day. If you want to do something like a one percent for the arts, this is where we put it. So if you wanted to say every capital project the city performs. That is valued at over five hundred thousand dollars, the department must uh budget one percent to an art fund, a public art fund. You know, that's, this is where you put it into the policy. So if there's some priority. That a counselor would like to see, or if that's something you all want to discuss, or uh maybe later. This, this is where we would designate it by policy. So it's not just me, let's do this because we feel like it. It's something that the council has made a priority. So I, that was the only one I could think of off the top of my head, just as an example. Like I said, the technology investment was very important to me um to make the organization more efficient. But if there's something that's a priority to council. We could outline it here in the budget. So if you say every capital project has over a hundred, over five hundred grand has to put. One percent to public art fund. Then that means all our employees know, our department heads know, hey, I've got a million dollar project. I need to budget a hundred thousand dollars for. Ten thousand for the art fund. You know, it's just something that's included.
I mean, if we're gonna talk about wish lists. Um, you know, I always thought um it would be cool. If we had a beautification or public art beautification and like. Public art um fund. That was based on how many visitors come into our community and would come off of, so like, I think I, was it like ten cents? For a pass and cruise ship passenger, or was it five cents? Something like super miniscule. But over the years, that would actually total up to be able to create, like, take care of a project or two within our community. To make it a little bit more, not so drab. Um, so I mean, that's something that I was gonna bring for it a long time ago, but haven't. Been derailed from that. But that's something that I thought would be beneficial to um, to the community. I know uh murals have been well received in other communities. Um, our locals. Love to see local artists do work as well, just the few that we have. Like people really love to go see that. Um, there could be potential projects all over the town. Um, it could also draw people to certain areas of our community that we want them to go to. So I don't know, that's just, if we're gonna throw wish lists out there. You know, having just, and that would come out of the general sales tax, but it would be based on how many passengers. So if it's one point, or I think this year is like one point one downtown if. So then five cents per person, that would be like five thousand dollars. Think nothing crazy. But I'll throw that out there now that she mentioned it.
Question on that, I mean, I like the thought, but the question would be, if it's based on the amount of cruise ship passengers, why would we bring it from that? What'd you say, sales tax fund? Why not bring it from the port fund where they can take it from the head tax?
Cause it's illegal and we can't unless the cruise lines. Unless the cruise lines say, yes, you can take five cents per a passenger that comes to the downtown docks. And put it towards beautification and public art. Then I guess that is a way.
They would also limit to where it could be, they also say it has to be downtown.
But we could negotiate potentially, you know, five cents of our head tax. My head tax, we don't got room there, but of something related to them. Could go towards that. It'd be like, you know, making sure the eagle stays nice and pristine and painted or. Um, maybe putting a mural up along the police department uh building there that represents our community. Or um the parking lot walls, you know, putting something. I'm just thinking something, you know, those type of things. Uh, that our locals could enjoy too. But so I don't know, there's always, it's not off the table, we could ask.
Yeah, so I'd be, I mean, I, I, I wouldn't object that it's illegal as a blanket statement. I think there's uh obviously scenarios in which. Certain places it could be legal. I'd be in favor of it if we're basing it off the tourists. Tourists are paying for it, but I don't think with our nine million dollar deficit and all that, I couldn't justify it coming from the. From our regular tax funds. But if we could get it from the tourists in somewhere unknown, I'd be all in favor.
Evernote. I do like that idea too. I, people love the, the mural with, on the fence. They love it. And um, and even the one at the uh rendezvous. It's, it's a talking point and it would bring up our, our, our talking rate, I think. It, it is important when people really enjoy this city because they have more of a tendency to want to come back. And so they see things like that and they see that you, you know, the beautification of the city. I think murals are really nice and it, it, it wouldn't be, you know, that expensive to do something like that. Yeah, maybe we can't start it now, but gosh, I, I think it's a really good idea. Didn't mean to get off topic, but wish lists we're talking about, so.
Mr. Tom.
I think uh the head tax can be used for it because this is for enhancing the experience of the passenger.
It has to enhance the experience of the passenger.
I just want to clarify on this. I don't. I don't want it to be tied just to the downtown corridor. Our city is very, well, it's not very long compared to other places. But you know, there's other parts of the community that could use some beautification. And some. Art that our artists, local artists could um present in those areas could be really beneficial. And also supports local artists. And yeah, I'm not looking for crazy money. I'm just saying, like, every year if you did five thousand dollars, you know. You could do some pretty cool things for the community and locals, so.
I like this on concept. Uh, if funding it through cruise ship passengers becomes problematic, I wouldn't mind finding a model much like the one the manager proposed. Where if we have perhaps capital investment projects of a certain size that we, you know, kind of shunt aside a little bit of money so that we can. Create, whether it's visual arts, performing arts, all kinds, just an art, an arts fund. Which if it's available to our residents year round, doesn't have to be tied to some of the limitations that are connected to CPV funding. And that we could benefit from even in the so-called offseason. So I, I love the idea of finding another way. Their avenue towards supporting the really vibrant arts culture that we have here. And I would love for those funds to be less restricted than CPV fund. CPV funds, I agree.
Another area of grant funding.
Alright, so um the next section uh is budget development. And we get to the area and I'll, I'll make some adjustments to here from the second paragraph. That um, the first paragraph just states what happens in today's world, like. Uh, fund transfers have to be through the city council, let's put it in a carder. And then typically budget adjustments I pay care of on my level. The city council, the, the spending limits were soft cap before September first. So, I'm sorry, I put this in red. That's where you let us know. We can put something in this policy saying that we will decrease any deficit budgets. In subsequent years by X percent. If, you know, like all deficit budgets have to be resolved within two years, five years. You could put it in policy, or we could just leave it open to where those are communicated, maybe. I'd put September first of year, each year, maybe it's August first each year. Where you let us know, we do not want to see the budget grow beyond the inflation rate or beyond five percent. Or we want to see the deficits reduced by X in the next budget year. That's what a, a soft spending cap is. A hard spending cap is kind of what you see with the federal government where they said, this is all we're gonna do. And then, then well, it really is soft because they just raised the debt. So I won't use that example, but um. A, a soft cap gives us those limits and it says, you know, this is what we want to set forth. Now, if we come back to you and say. Ten thousand people moved to the island and we have to have more police officers. You know, that's not gonna be applicable. We'll have to come back and tell you. We can't meet it because ten thousand people moved to the island, which, you know, I know that's an extreme example, but I'm just trying to give an example. But essentially, this is where you're gonna give us the instruction so we can start preparing the budget. Where the council comes back and says, we will not tolerate uh continued deficits. Or your deficit has to be resolved within the next two or three fiscal years, whatever that, that direction from council is. So um. If we come back to you during budget hearings and increase and we say, well, we need the limit to be increased by two percent or one percent, this is why. Staff needs to come to you and say, this is the justification. Have we done everything we can? Have we looked at every avenue? Have we cut every line that we need to in order to meet your goal? And so of course it'll take into consideration the revenues, essential services, be realistic. So in other words, you can't say, well, let's uh. Let's cut the budget by twenty percent just because we feel like that's a good number. You know, it has to be realistic because. We would have to cancel services at that point. So I left it as a very general sentence. And that could be a deliberation for council, you know, that we bring an item to you the first meeting of September saying. These are your spending cap guidelines. And you know, staff can let you know, this is what we're recommending and council can chisel at that time. Because it helps us as we come back and prepare the final document to say, nope, we gotta make this work. This, these are our marching orders.
Um, I would like to see no more than five percent increase in each department with a preference of keeping it flat.
So I think it might be helpful to just, just so the council knows what, what we do. Um, so we put together budget instructions, you know, usually go out the first week of August. The instructions include what are our known increases that we know today are going to happen January one, twenty twenty four. And one of those is step increases for all employees. Because we have a compensation plan that says this, every employee will be evaluated and they're at step whatever. And they get a step increase once they meet these requirements. So there's seven. There's collective bargaining agreement wage increases. So if the CBA says these employees get a grade increase or a grade change for this agreement. Then that is a known cost that we have to increase. And then there's colas, if there's an agreed plan of cola. So those are things that are known. There's possibly federal state requirements that require new testing for certain types of employees. Maybe fire department has to fall into, they have a new requirement and they have to get, have this training by this time. And there are already requirements that they have. There's CDL trains and we can no longer do that in town. We have to send them out. So I just, departments have to sometimes increase their budget for certain things. Then there's known rate increases. So if we increase the electric, the water, the telecom. That means all of our budgets operationally increase because those rate increases happen. And then inflation, we, we don't have any control over inflation. And so inflation is increasing. Last year it increased, I think it was twelve percent. So um. When, so that's what we ask departments to do is to look at their budget, look at those increases. We prepare the salaries and wages in finance and based on the current staffing levels. And then um, and then of course, there are some estimates. So when we're talking about a five percent. I just caution because we are looking at certain things and going through what we're required to increase. And that may not be in the control of every department to, to adjust or change. So do you mean maybe supplies? Maybe you don't increase your supplies or your contract services more than five percent? Because personnel may be a different story.
I'm going to stick with my statement of five percent increase on expenditures in each department. And I spoke to it earlier. We had a massive deficit last year in the budget that was presented to us. And ideally, I would love to say we're going to cut each department by five percent so that that deficit will be.
And ideally, I would love to say we're going to cut each department by five percent so that that deficit will be less. But I know that's not realistic. So doing a five percent increase. Again, department heads are going to have to decide priorities on their items and where their funding is going. And um, I mean, we have to be responsible over funds. So I understand it's not ideal. Everybody might not get everything that they wish list. I mean, I didn't get my wish list tonight, so. I mean, it goes the same, you know, that's how it is, but uh, we have to get our deficit under control. Especially with the cost of everything going up, we got, we we can't keep having those deficits. It's just irresponsible for us to do that. So I'm sticking with my five percent increase in expenditures for each department.
Sure.
Relative to last year.
Based upon the comments from the finance director and the fact that the. Citywide rate study hasn't had an opportunity to be done, I'll offer a different alternative for consideration. So that a dollar figure or a percentage, a time horizon, starting with this budget cycle of thirty six months or three years. To to reach that balanced budget. And define, the council could define a timeline and then. Staff knows you have a target date that you need to reach. So I would offer that as a another alternative.
Mr. Gage. Uh, I agree with Ms. Bradbury's proposal. I think five percent is reasonable. I just feel like. Thinking back to the last few years of budgeting, looking at how things have been going. A three-year timeline to try to set a goal would be great. And it's a good idea, but I think we need something a little more because as we've seen. The facts, the reality is some serious changes are going to have to be made. And they're not all going to be comfortable, easy or likeable changes. And I think we kind of have gone down this path of saying, well. You know, we gotta do this, this and this and we don't really want to make the changes, so let's let's look at it in later years. I think we gotta have something to start making up some of that ground. So I think the five percent increase is reasonable. Many of the departments last year, uh, you know, had year-over-increases from the prior year up to forty percent. And most of them were in the fifteen to thirty range. So, you know, that itself is a pretty good starter, I guess. You know, just one year there. So I don't think it's asking too much. I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, I I agree with Mark. We were in a, you know, the the COVID years, that's two, three years, basically. Coming out of COVID is unprecedented. So I I don't think hamstring the departments in one. In one year, I think it needs to be something that's addressed over a three-year, four-year period so that we can bounce back. But also keep, you know, and it's not like we're. Like, don't, I mean, we just don't have staff on top of the fact that we we have things that we need to keep running. But I think giving them three years to um, get things so ironed out with revenues coming in. In the next four years, three to four years, gives us time to kind of, I'm getting tired. Get a break. Um, but I I agree with Mark on that.
Ms. Kessler, Ms. Bradbury.
I agree. I like the time horizon thing better than the flat limitation. I think maybe we could, you know, say that we have to make uh, progress on the deficit every year and then. And it needs to be, uh, it took three years to get here and I think, you know, makes sense to take three years to get back. With with an eye towards doing whatever you can if we have a windfall or what have you.
Um, first question is, when was the last time the city had a balanced budget completely? Our our budget's always balanced in the sense that we don't have an unanticipated deficit, so in that sense, so. But we use reserves to balance.
Let me rephrase that, sorry. I thought it was obvious what my point was, but um, okay. When has a balanced budget been presented to the council without the use of reserve funds?
I'd have to go back and look at it and bring it back to you. I have that offhand. But I, every year they can't budget more than what you have. And you're supposed to have as much revenue as you do expenditures. So um, but if you don't raise rates or you don't raise taxes, the expenses that you may have. Obviously aren't going to balance out because we haven't done that. During COVID, we weren't able to do that, so.
So the reason I ask that is the. Structurally balanced budget. Hasn't been presented to the council way before even COVID. So saying that COVID is the reason that we have an unbalanced budget, I don't think is an accurate statement because we haven't had. We've had to dip into reserves for prior to COVID as well. I I I like Councilmember Flora's idea as well. I. I like having a horizon on it. It's gonna be my next one, but I think it's great to have that on it. I just. We're never going to get control of that deficit. If we have the same increases that we have last year. I mean, we have some, a little bit more revenue than we had planned, which is awesome. But to my knowledge, it's not nine million dollars worth to cover the previous deficit. So um, I just would like to see a little bit of control on the expenditures. Of um, each department and also to keep everybody level. I mean. We talked about it many times where we were saying, well, this department, they're increasing forty percent because they want. This new item and that's great, but then this department over here who listen to our, you know, heed on, please don't increase that much. And they said, we'll forego these necessities that we need to do our job because that's what you asked us to do. Whereas not all departments did that. So I I am through the last budget and I think you all know how frustrated I was. Because certain departments who didn't listen to what we asked for, got everything they wanted, all these new toys, all these new things. But then other departments who were like, we desperately need this, we were saying, sorry. You didn't put it in there. You didn't ask for the forty percent, so you're not going to get it. And I think if we put everybody, every single department on a level playing field and make everybody. Really think of priority on their budget. Will be more beneficial to the overall budget and to each department and and whatnot. So that's, I I like my um, Councilmember Flora's idea as well, uh, fully support putting that in there as well. But I would like to see all the departments on an even playing field this go around.
Ms. Gage, Mr. Frigg, Mr. Gage.
So I think um, when it comes to the history of um, balanced budgets and departments. Uh, the council is guilty of not raising roots. In two thousand sixteen, when we got the rate uh, return, it was a forty-five percent deficit. In revenue rates that we needed to raise and we did not raise them on our customers, which is our community. Part of the problem, and I agree, I honestly don't want to raise rates. That goes all the way back and you can correct me, Kifer, but I believe. It goes back five years prior to that, there was a rate study. That we again, didn't raise rates. We didn't even try to make it where we itemized and add, raise rates in an increment. Over a ten-year period so that we could be competitive with the cost of doing services. I can, I can only reiterate it again. Rates are gonna, our costs to do services will continue to go up. You cannot cut back. It, we have to either find another source to pay for services. Or we will at some point have to raise rates. Now, I, when I moved to Kenai in two thousand eight, my water and sewer rate was forty-five dollars. You know what it is today? Ninety-eight dollars. It was raised over a two percent increment over that period of time. We don't do that here. That's our, that's on us. At this table, that's on us. Because the departments and the manager brought that to us. As a council and we did not raise rates. So here we are. If we're gonna balance the budget, we also have to be accountable for what we as a community pay. For those services.
Mr. Frigg, Mr. Gage, Mr. Vitani, and then I think we're going to move on from this one and allow staff to bring us something back. Good luck. Clearly, this, clearly this is an area the council does not have overwhelming agreement.
I may not have to elaborate my comment. If I may, through the chair, get clarification, Councilmember Bradbury. Just on on your proposal here, the five percent spending cap for each department, you're proposing that as a hard cap and that is the soft cap for the September first. That's not much. I know it's her department chair right now. You're you're proposing this five percent limit on expansion for each department as a hard cap? Do I understand that correctly? Or or is that suggested as a soft cap?
Well, she had said that if that cap couldn't be met, they would come back and say, this is why we can't meet that. And this is the evidence. And then at that time can be adjusted if the council feels it should be adjusted at that time. Um, I thought we were talking about soft caps. I mean. If we, if we were to say five percent increase of expenditures in each department and somebody came back with forty percent. Obviously, I don't think that is even attempting to follow suit. But if somebody comes back and says, you know, seven percent is, we have to increase seven percent of expenditures. If they have evidence that isn't crazy, you know, that's something the council can totally talk about. I'm not saying like absolutely if it's not five percent, don't give it to them. But if we say five percent is where we want to be and they come back with the percentages they came back with last year. Then we have a problem of saying, hey, you know, we wanted to somewhat get close to this. I just don't want to say, I mean, we need to cut, we have to if we're gonna balance out. But um, we know there's those increases, but people need to prioritize, so. I'm not saying that if somebody came back at seven percent and the council looked at the evidence and that it's super important. I'm not saying that, I mean, the council decides at that point, but. Soft cap five percent is what we should aim for in terms of the budget for next year.
Thank you. Mr. Gage.
I did just want to clarify, uh, for some comments. And in the last few years, we have, most recently, we've increased the sales tax. We've increased landfill. Uh, and I think we've increased water and wastewater, although it might have just been one, I can't remember for sure. So we have been increasing. I don't know about you guys, I hear from the citizens all the time that they can't afford their. Their bills, their KPU and their taxes and they're mad that their sales tax has gone up a lot. And they say, uh, in the summertime, that's when we're doing, you know, we've all heard the complaints that are valid and true. So we have raised rates, but I don't, I don't, I don't think the answer to this is let's just skyrocket the rates even more or the taxes. I think at some point the buck does have to stop with us and at some point during these. During these budget sessions, uh, going forward, we're gonna have to start making tough decisions and and. Again, we keep hearing the word cut. In my time on here, we've never cut anything. We've proposed a whole lot of reductions in growth and and done very little of it. But uh, I've yet to see a cut proposed and certainly uh, very little reductions in growth. Voted in favor of, so I I think at some point we have to, we have to make the hard decisions and the buck has to stop with us.
Yeah, this is tough, but I think we've got to swallow the pill now for future generations. We've got to do it now. We've got to start now. I know it's gonna be hard. Department heads have to do that dance that they've got to. Follow that thin line to see where they will meet what the council is asking. I think five percent. Should be a cap because we saw the last two budget cycles that have been part of fifteen percent, eighteen percent, forty percent, even up to thirty percent. I agree with Councilman Flora. That other than the five percent cap, we need to give them a thirty-six month. Timeline to come up with a balanced budget. I mean, five percent plus that timeline. Because we have to swallow the pill somewhere, otherwise. We will be in a position where this city will be broke.
Will you chew on that? That's, that's.
Um, on the next section, when it comes to employee investment and development, I could expand on this based on our discussion earlier about the FTEs. I I put here that, you know, our our goals for our staffing level to remain flat unless pre-approved. And I'll expand this language more based on our prior discussion, so that's where it would come in. I also noted in there about employee training and succession program, just because that was a council priority that we need to make sure it is programmed into the budget. Recurring expenditures, it's really just information that we will put that in the, I mean, that's just budgeting one or one. But it's in our our policy statement. And then um, capital expenditures, this is where we chatted a little bit earlier about. What I'd like to see is not only, what I'd like to see in our CIP moving forward is not only this is the CIP request. But this is going to be the operation and maintenance request tied to that. So in other words, if I'm replacing the police car, I would like to see that it's going to reduce the costs of maintenance on the old police car. So, you know, I should be saving ten thousand dollars a year by replacing this piece of equipment. Or if I have to buy a completely new filtration system and it's going to require filters, it's going to require. More maintenance, it's going to require specialized training, that should also appear in the CIP request. And that's not quite how we have it set up yet. For Michelle, again, she can throw things at me later, but I sent her a whole, like, this is what I think it should look like. And it was a very more complex document, which I'm sure will cause more work for the department heads. But it gives us a better idea of, can this project be phased? Can we do a phase one, two and three? If so, what's really realistic? Can can you do engineering in fiscal year twenty-four, then construction in twenty-five, then operation and maintenance in twenty-six? So let's see that in the actual document. Also, um, I'd like to see more in the CIP, what's project management, what sales, well, we don't pay sales tax, we can delete that. I mean, delete sales tax out of there. Contingency amounts needed within the CIP. And then also that um. They, and this already happens, the the part in red that the capital needs will not be considered if they haven't been identified in the CIP. So that that's already a practice. It's just nothing that we've stated in in policy. And then just more of our practices are in black as far as launching, uh, long-range capital plans are based on growth, demand, infrastructure. This is what our department heads already do, um, that they're presumed approved and carried over and expended as long as there are sufficient funds, which is what we already do. Any uh, projects that are carried over during budget hearings, we already do. We say, you know, this project wasn't complete, so it's got to be rolled over to the next year. And then the last one, the last paragraph, we've had this discussion. And I thought it was important because we've talked about it and I thought it was important to articulate it in the policy. That we need to maintain our physical assets at a level adequate to protect that investment. If your ratepayers and your taxpayers have invested ten million dollars on a piece of equipment. We need to make sure that we're maintaining and replacing it to to protect that investment in itself. That we're not just letting things run to heck and we don't, we really don't. But that comes to future development. We're gonna have to have a better asset management program down the road. And we've talked about it a little bit as far as like rolling stock replacement and whatnot. So I took all those discussions and just put it into a paragraph, essentially saying, we are going to make this a priority to talk about how we take care of our assets. In long range. There are no comments there. Then the last part is just public reporting and transparency. This is what we already do again as far as monitoring and I think I just added in red. This is what we already do again, as far as monitoring, and I think I just added in red, I put in the quarterly financial reports discussing major trends and being distributed to departments, we do this, but I put it in red because is there something more the council needs? Because right now you get reports that we've just traditionally given the council. Like, is there something else you want to see that should be in part, as part of this?
I've always thought it would be nice if, once a month, if it's the first or the third meeting, if the finance director could give a state of finances. Because I know a lot of public, all they hear at our meeting is spend, 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 spend. But in reality, you know, one thing that really sticks out in my mind is we have a lot of unfilled positions, which then does capitalize into savings that people don't necessarily realize. And the same for like vehicle acquisition, just like we had said, we might just have to have the funds dispersed now. I know we get the reports on there that state very generally where funds are, but I thought it would be, would be nice for a report, nothing wrong. But just to talk about, you know, are there any concerns that have, the finance director has found or that are gonna be coming down the chain to us? Or like the gate process, like that wasn't expensive, but let's pretend it was really expensive and it was coming down. Just kind of giving the public and us just a verbal update on, you know, are we in good standings? Are we a little overspending what we normally are at this time? Just so that the public realizes where our finances are when we're sitting here and approving all this money. Again, I know they could read it, but it would be nice to have a report. Verbal report.
And a lot of what we give you has just been, that's what we've always given the council, so, you know, this is opportunities, I really want to know something.
And obviously, if you guys have any thoughts besides the meeting, you want to express those, I think, any subjects too.
Yeah, if you think of something, absolutely. Well, that, that's it, great, wow.
I just want to go back to employee investment and development. Has there a training program or has there anything been done, like the succession training or succession policy?
We don't have a succession policy. So, so my plan, and I'll just lay this out to the council now. My plan was to do a career development plan with every single employee, so they'll be receiving a document that says, you know, where do you see yourself and making that part of the evaluation process. And so what I've done in the past is I've actually had my supervisors go in and identify successors for every position, you know, like, and then what do they need to get there? And, and, and so, so my answer is no, but that is something I need to start on, and I'll make that.
Chair, we want to take a motion to reconvene.
Your honor, I move the city council reconvening to the special meeting.
Second.
In second discussion. But we're all.
Flora. Yes?
Yes.
And again?
Yes.
Gage.
Yes.
Mr.? Yes. Bradbury?
Yes.
Matani?
Yes.
Mayor and council comments, Mr. Gas. Mr. Finnegan.
I like the manager's suggestion that this document be used for new council members, I think it's a very clear guideline to understanding how the city's finance, finances work, at least getting started in the process.
Mr. Brubaker.
Yeah, I really like having this conversation now, I feel like some good ideas were brought up and things that I hadn't thought of, that others had suggested that were really good ideas. And I'm glad to see that kind of happened now versus us spending two months having this discussion, which hopefully goes better this year, but I just really appreciate the time for this meeting and the preparation and the information, the slideshow that was given. Even as, you know, I've done two budgets, it was still, I absolutely loved all the information, so I'm appreciative of everybody's time and effort on this topic.
Mr. Matani.
First of all, thank you, the staff, for bringing this together. Thank you to all of my colleagues here that we had a healthy discussion, ideas were thrown out, suggestions were made, hopefully this will turn into a live document and will be enhanced every time we go into budgets or expenditures, revenues. Also, I'd like to give kudos to the fire department, or how they handled that accident up north, how they responded, so thank you to them.
Ms. Kessler.
Yeah, thank you for the, once I figured out what it was, all the stuff that you gave us there. It was a nice consolidation of everything, good work putting it all together and the ideas and the conversation around the dais.
Ms. Cage.
I have nothing.
Ms. Flora, nothing. I just wanted to commend the council, because I think this is really good that we have this discussion now, because, you know, we always have this discussion sort of on some level in November. And then we get very frustrated, because I think it was really good to take the time now and actually do it, I think that's. Request for executive session, birth three, financing option.
Your honor, I move the city council declared its investment interest to the city council to discuss negotiation of financing terms for capital improvements support of Ketchikan Birth Three with Cruise Line International Association of Alaska in executive session in accordance with Ketchikan Municipal Code 2.043025A1, which may involve discussion of matters, the immediate knowledge of which would clearly have an adverse effect upon the finances of the city.
Second.
In seconded, discussion. People poll.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Bradbury?
Yes.
Matani?
Yes.
Flora? Yes?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Yes.